Good morning and welcome to the October 7th Committee of the Hole Meeting, which I now call to order. Madam Clerk, please show for the record of this meeting that Mayor Haxson is absent with notice. As Acting Mayor, I will be chairing today's meeting in the mayor's absence. Additionally, Councillor Crone is also absent with notice. Moving through the agenda, we have declarations of interest. Is there any members that would like to declare? Seeing none, I will speak. Just as it relates to G1, I just want to provide a bit of disclosure. Previously, I declared a conflict of interest as it related to that secondary plan, which item G1 is speaking to. My personal home is directly adjacent to the geographical area of one of the lands being discussed. And that's one I previously declared. Since that time, I have been communicating and clarified that this is of community interest in common. And as such, I do not have an interest moving forward, and so I will be participating in the discussion. As it relates to item G3, I do have a conflict of interest as I own a company that owns a listed heritage property. And as such, I am not able to participate in the draft build heritage study. So with that, I will move forward to the land acknowledgement. The town of East Wilinbury recognises and acknowledges the lands originally used and occupied by the First Peoples of the Williams Treaties First Nations and other indigenous peoples. And on behalf of council, I thank them for sharing this land. We also acknowledge the Chipewas of Georgina Island First Nation as East Wilinbury's closest First Nation community, and recognise the unique relationship the Chipewas have with the lands and the waters of this territory. They are the water protectors and environmental stewards of these lands, and we join them in these responsibilities. So with that, that takes us to community announcements. Any members wish to share community announcements? Councillor Leahy.
Thank you very much for you, Acting Mayor Johns. It's a busy time of year, my goodness. The countdown for Christmas has started and it's only 79 days away, so just so that everybody is prepared. I wanted to wish all the members of the Chinese community a happy mid-autumn moon festival. The moon was at its fullest and brightest on Sunday evening, and so they were celebrating this family festival. So I'd like to wish them a Zhongqiu Jie Kuai Le. And I'd also like to wish the Jewish community a happy Sukkot. And to our members of the Jewish community, we are also remembering today that October 7th is the second anniversary of the horrific terrorist attack. And so we have them in our thoughts, and I want to wish everybody else a happy Thanksgiving coming up on next Monday. And so I do have a request for an announcement. The senior, award-winning senior in our community, Bev Hall, is putting on her annual Holly Berry's Show on Saturday, November the 8th, between 10:00 a.m. and 3:00 p.m. at the Holland Landing Community Centre on Young Street. And as in previous years, the proceeds go to the Holland Landing Lions Club. So that's a great opportunity to attend the Holly Berry's Artisan Christmas Show.
Thank you, Councillor Leahy. Any other members? So I am sure Councillor Crone, if he was here, he would love to be able to communicate the fact that our Health and Active Living Plaza is going to be opening on October 17th at 5:00 p.m. I know my own mother was messaging me and asking when it's opening, so clearly of community interest if it's got my mother engaged. So if you go to the website, eastwilinbury.ca, and look under the Health and Active Living Plaza, all of the details will be there, clearly extremely important for our community. And just wanted to invite everybody to go take a look at what the plans are for the weekend and invite everybody out. Now we'll move to deputations. Before we begin on item E with the deputations, a bit of housekeeping I would need to read through. Deputants are asked to come to the lecture and speak clearly into the microphone. Please introduce yourself and advise if you are here on your own or representing someone else. You will have five minutes to speak, not including any questions from council. I will provide a quick timing reminder. As you approach five-minute mark, please ensure your comments stay focused on the topic you outlined in your deputation request. And we ask to remain, that everyone maintain respect and decorum. Disruptive or inappropriate behaviour will be addressed, and if needed, I may issue a warning or ask someone to leave. And I'm sure we won't need to do any of that today. So that brings us to item one. So today we have A. Lankoff making a deputation to our committee regarding item G1, the Development Services Planning Branch Presentation and Report Regarding Complete Communities. Mr. Lankoff, if you'd like to come to the lecture.
I'm Andrew Lankoff, and I'm representing myself. Acting Mr. Mayor, I hope I got that right. Members of council, good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today. I'm here to raise a serious concern about our community's fire protection, one that's becoming increasingly urgent as East Wilinbury continues to grow. Today, our town is home to nearly 43,000 residents, up from about 34,000 just a few years ago, a 44% increase. And with that growth has come more homes, more traffic, more infrastructure, and more emergency calls. What hasn't kept pace is our full-time fire service staffing. At present, we have just about 22 full-time firefighters, all based out of the Queenstown station. That equates to roughly 0.5 firefighters per 1,000 residents, well below the industry-recognised guideline of one per 1,000. In comparison, many other municipalities in Ontario meet or exceed that benchmark, and for good reason. It is a standard that helps ensure timely, effective response during emergencies. Now, to be clear, we are fortunate to have a dedicated group of paid-on-call volunteer firefighters, and their contribution is vital. But as our own Fire Master Plan acknowledges, volunteer response is not always immediate or guaranteed, especially during weekday hours when many are working outside of town. This means there are times when calls are delayed because no one is physically at the station. Our current model places a great deal of responsibility on the Queenstown Career Crew, a small team that must cover a very large area. In many cases, they're the only staff crew responding when a call comes in. And when multiple emergencies happen at once, which is becoming more frequent, they simply can't be in two places at once. There are also times when the first truck out has only two firefighters on board, rather than the standard four. That limits what they can do safely upon arrival, particularly in structure fires where two-in, two-out rules apply. In some situations, our firefighters have to wait for backup before entering a burning building or performing a rescue. That's not a reflection on their courage or dedication, it's a matter of safety and resources. In addition, we have specialised equipment like our 111-foot aerial ladder truck that can't always be staffed or operated due to training and personnel shortages. With more multi-story buildings being approved and built, which will be a big part of the push for intensification under the Complete Community Secondary Plan that council has approved, this is something we need to address sooner rather than later. What this all points to is a town that has grown faster than its emergency services. But now we're reaching a tipping point. The question isn't whether our fire department is working hard, they are. The question is whether they have the tools and the staffing they need to do the job safely and effectively. The current level of staffing is putting unnecessary pressure on our firefighters, and it's creating risk for residents when response times are delayed. Some steps have been taken in recent years, adding some career positions, planning a new fire station. But as one councillor recently noted, a new fire hall without full-time staff is little more than an empty shell. The fire chief has asked for more full-time staff year after year and been met with minimal increases. The Fire Master Plan itself asks the question, when does a municipality outgrow the volunteer model? The answer is now, not yesterday, not next year, now. What's needed is a commitment to incrementally but meaningfully increase the number of career firefighters so that all areas of East Wilinbury can receive consistent, timely service, regardless of the day or location. Approving new subdivisions and advancing the Complete Community Secondary Plan, which will significantly increase density, is unsustainable given the current capacity of our fire services. It raises a critical question, why is the town moving forward with intensification when fire services already struggle to meet existing community needs? People's lives are at stake. Building new fire stations and cutting ribbons and ground breakings mean nothing if we don't have the staff to operate the fire trucks meant to protect those homes. An unstaffed fire hall isn't fire protection, it's just optics. East Wilinbury is falling behind our neighbours in fire protection, and it's costing us. While towns like Newmarket and Aurora benefit from top fire underwriters' ratings, of full-time crews and proper hydrant coverage, we're still rated only semi-protected with a 3B grade. That means higher insurance premiums for residents and businesses, slower response times, and greater risks to life and property. Our rural area is only upgraded from unprotected because we proved we could truck and water, not because we have real infrastructure. This is not just a fire department issue, it's a public safety and economic development issue. We must treat it like the urgent infrastructure priority it is. Other municipalities are using development charges to buy equipment, we should too. We all want to feel confident that if we or our loved ones need help, whether it's a fire, a medical emergency or rescue, someone will arrive quickly and with the right training and resources to make a difference. Our residents expect that, our firefighters deserve that. The town is growing faster than it can protect itself. The only thing more costly than hiring the proper number of firefighters is failing to act until someone dies or a building burns down unnecessarily. Let's not wait for the tragedy. East Wilinbury is no longer a small village. We are a fast-growing municipality on the edge of the GTA, and our fire protection must reflect that reality. Let's give our firefighters the tools and the staffing they need to protect the community properly. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lankoff. Any questions from committee regarding Mr. Lankoff's deputation? Councillor Leahy?
Thank you very much for you, Acting Mayor Johns. Thank you very much for your presentation. This is a, it was very articulate, and it's very timely considering that we're discussing the secondary plans this morning and having a presentation from an expert on that. So I just wanted to confirm with staff and with our fire chief, I believe, and I want everyone in the public to be aware, I believe that there is a special council workshop coming up on Wednesday, October the 15th. And the fire department and the master plan will be a topic of conversation that day, is that correct?
Through Acting Mayor Johns, Councillor Leahy, that's correct. On October 15th, we have a special council workshop scheduled to provide some additional information to council related to our establishing and regulating bylaw, which establishes and sets the level of service within the town for today and for the future. And that, part of that process is also one of the initial steps to formulate and develop our long-term master fire plan. That's part of the process.
Thank you very much for providing additional information and clarification. And I assume that that will be a special council workshop that you'll be very interested in attending. And I appreciate, again, that you've brought this forward in advance of our budget discussions later this fall. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Councillor Leahy. Any other members of committee? Seeing none, I will look to have a mover to receive Mr. Lankoff's deputation, Councillor Leahy, all those in favor. Motion carries.
Thank you.
So as we move through the agenda, item F is presentations, and we do have none at this time, at which point this is committee, and we will be moving to Development Services with Councillor Roy DiClemente in the chair, so I'll pass the gavel over to you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. We have three rather large items on our agenda this morning. The first one is item G1, a presentation from our planning branch regarding our Complete Community Secondary Plan update. May I turn the microphone over to you, Mr. Krupnick? I believe you're going to introduce Mr. Palmer.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, today with me I have Ron Palmer, who's a planner with the Planning Partnership, who is based in Toronto and does work throughout the GTA and beyond. Ron is, has been with us throughout the duration of this study, is presenting to council today on phase three of the Complete Community Secondary Plan. And before I turn the mic over to Ron, I just want to make the members of council aware that on October 16th, we are also having a public information session, with two sessions on that date between 3:00 and 5:00 p.m. and 7:00 and 9:00 p.m. And that will be at the East Wilinbury Operations Centre. Yeah, and thank you very much. And I will turn it over now to Ron Palmer. Thank you, Ron.
Thank you.
Thank you, go ahead, please.
Always great to be in East Wilinbury. I will go through our presentation and happy to answer any questions that you might have. Can we go to the next slide? Okay. Things have changed a little bit since the last time I spoke to you. Timing has converged both on the preparation of your official plan to be submitted to the province for approval, as well as the secondary plan. The decision was made that it would be a good opportunity to combine both of those projects together. There are some benefits to the municipality in terms of appeal rights at the end of the approval process. However, the way that the official plan was initially set up was to accept individual policy sections for various plan areas within the town, building upon the general framework that applies townwide. So that would mean that the Complete Communities Plan area would simply be part of the broader official plan with additional policies that deal specifically with the Complete Communities Plan area. As we move through this process, and as we get nearer the end, the goals are to get something out to the public, the province, to staff early in November, and begin the process of refining and working towards submission to the province for approval in early 2026. Next slide, please. The official plan, as you may recall, because I know many of you are on council, it was initially adopted by you in 2022. Then it went to the region, who at the time was the approval authority, and they had made a number of comments that needed to be understood, reviewed, and addressed. In addition, given the time that has elapsed, we certainly have multiple changes to provincial legislation in the Planning Act, and of course, a brand-new provincial planning statement that came out in 2024. So this review of your OP at this point includes updating the policy framework to match, to conform with, to have regard for, and to be consistent with, which are all three planning tests that we have, making sure you're up to date. So that's taken a bit of time, but we are getting closer to the release of the comprehensive document. Next slide. Just before I get into some of the details of the Complete Communities Plan, there are four land areas within the town which are part of your central growth area. They've been part of your central growth area for a number of years now. However, they are not, I apologize for trying to be a little bit technical here, they're not formally part of the main central area, which is a defined settlement area under provincial policy. However, they're also not part of the Green Belt Plan Protected Countryside. So they're in a bit of an odd limbo, where they're outside of the main central area, but not encumbered by provincial policy related to the Green Belt Plan. Over time, these lands had been called a number of things, including the White Belt, which did confer some level of intent for future urban development. Through the official plan update that we're currently working on, there is an opportunity to look at these four properties, potentially bring them into the settlement area, and make them available for future urban development in the long term beyond what is already being considered for planning purposes in this plan. It's important to note that these four areas are not the same. Some are very clearly appropriate for employment land development, some can include residential development, and one of them in particular, Area Two, is about ninety-five percent environmental protection. So certainly that one has a whole host of other policies that would need to be dealt with. Nonetheless, that is being considered through the official plan review process, and you'll see how, what that looks like once we get the draft documents ready. Next slide. This just gives you a bit of an idea how big those areas are. As I said, number two, which is about thirty hectares, about ninety-five percent is environmental protection. Three and four have very good potential for employment area development. Number one is likely a more community area residential opportunity. Next slide. Moving our attention to the Complete Communities Plan area, as I've said since the beginning, it's a very strangely shaped secondary plan area. It's really infilling the gaps between Hall and Landing, Sharon, Queenstown, and your Green Lane Secondary Plan area. It's quite large, almost three thousand acres. And there's also quite a significant component of that, which is environmental protection. It has been subdivided into what we call community design plan districts, and there's six of them. That allows ongoing and future planning work to be carried out in smaller compartmentalized areas with the overall goal that everything fits together, and that the main central urban growth area becomes a fully functional and connected community in East Glinbury. Next slide. The vision statement that we've been using to guide us through this process comes from the official plan that you adopted in 2022. I'm not going to read it for you, but it's an important underlying statement of what some of the things we're trying to achieve through this plan exercise. Next slide, please. I'd like to blame anybody, but I have to take the blame myself. There's actually seven fundamental principles on this list, notwithstanding the number. These are also from your official plan from 2022, without any modifications, and along with the vision statement, these principles guide us in creating, creating a policy framework that links the vision with the principles with the policy action. Next slide. This is an important slide because it talks about what that three thousand or so acres is going to deliver over time, keeping in mind that the planning horizon for this plan is 2051. It's important to note that all of these land areas considered together are going to generate approximately fifty thousand and five hundred people and jobs. That results in a density of about sixty-five people and jobs per hectare overall. And for comparative purposes, the Green Lane Secondary Plan area is achieving about seventy people and jobs per hectare. So it's in line generally with where new development has been going in terms of overall density, and simply applying the density to the land area results in a big number. And I would call that a transformational number in East Glinbury. You are growing and growing relatively quickly. You still have a lot of land available for urban development as part of the Sharon and Queenstown secondary plans, notwithstanding all of that development potential that's available in Green Lane. So this is just another step forward. It's a long-term plan. It will generate significant population and employment. Next slide. What's important in doing a secondary plan is what is important for the anticipated communities to have a high quality of life. And in my opinion, that means we need parkland, we need schools, we need community facilities, and we need opportunities for retail and commercial use. I'm going to talk a little bit about that. We do have other experts on the team that are helping inform how the policy framework will be laid out in the official plan, and it starts with parkland. We've identified minimum parkland requirements for each of the community design plan districts, and the mapping identifies symbolically a number of locations. We're working with the provisions of the Parkland Dedication Bylaw when we establish a minimum. However, it needs to be pretty clear that in terms of achieving appropriate service levels, you will need to achieve substantially higher levels of parkland to accommodate appropriate facilities. Next slide. Work has also been done to identify the needs for community centers, ice pads, and library space. This is also integrated into the policy framework. We've identified the need for three-branch libraries, a major community center, and a two-ice pad arena facility. We're still working on refining the actual locations for those facilities, but nonetheless, the population and employment numbers have led to those requirements as they are articulated. Next slide. Similarly, looking at retail and service commercial facilities, we also have an expert consultant on that front. They've identified a minimum and a maximum need. Again, I'm still working with them, so this table is likely to change. However, it gives you the idea that the areas with the most population obviously drive the need for more retail, service, commercial facilities, and we'll be distributing and setting minimum requirements in the planning framework to ensure that these communities get the necessary retail and service commercial uses that they can support based on their population. Next slide, please. Schools. Schools are important. We've been working with the school boards throughout this process. We've identified the need for one additional secondary school, keeping in mind that there are sites already identified in East Glinbury for secondary schools. They just have not yet been built. We have identified the need for two elementary schools in Green Earth Village, an elementary school in Hall and Landing, and two elementary schools in the Young Corridor. I think that's a total of eight elementary schools and one secondary school to serve this growing population. Again, working with the school boards in terms of identifying conceptual locations for those schools, and those are identified symbolically on the schedules to the plan. Next slide. The first layer of a planning exercise like this is to identify, refine, confirm the natural heritage system. In this plan, there is a specialist consultant who has gone through all of the technical work necessary to come to this version of the natural heritage system. It includes a designation, which is the dark green, which is environmental protection. Those lands have been identified as accommodating natural heritage features and any associated ecological functions. The next element is what we call the adjacent lands overlay, and it's an overlay, not a designation. The intent of that overlay is to trigger the requirement for further environmental studies to ensure that any urban development that is within approximately a hundred meters of the protected areas is appropriately studied to ensure no negative impact on those features and functions. Somewhat unique to this secondary plan area, there are two or three small areas that have a different overlay. That overlay recognizes a few areas where there has been no level of agreement on the level of significance of the natural features. So that, and it's really hard to see on this, so I'm not going to try, but they're all in the Young Corridor area. These are, this overlay is simply, again, to require further study to ensure that existing natural features and functions are appropriately protected and associated buffers are appropriately included in that. Next slide. Switching to hectares, keep in mind that the total land area of around eleven-hundred-and-fifty hectares is about three thousand acres. Three hundred and fifty hectares of that is environmental protection. So it is a significant component, and you can see from the previous map that it does intersperse throughout the area, and it connects to the townwide system. And the fundamental principle of planning in Ontario is to protect natural features and their functions. So that's our first layer of the plan. Next slide, please. So this is what the secondary plan area for this community is starting to look like. As noted, it is kind of an oddly shaped area, keeping in mind that it is all the interstitial lands between Hall and Landing, Sharon, and Queenstown, and north of Green Lane. I'm going to tell you what the land use designations are generally, but typically yellow is the low-density residential, and that's the bulk of the study area. The two purples are mixed use areas. The darker purple is commercial mixed use, where we would anticipate the majority of the retail and service commercial uses would be located. The lighter purple is the residential mixed use, where the, it's intended for low-rise and mid-rise development. Then there are a host of symbols, and the symbols are community facilities, schools, and parks. We include a couple of specific, beyond neighborhood parks, we do include a couple of connectors, which are intended to connect some pieces of environmental protection designation. They're on locations that aren't significant natural features, but there is value in connecting that system together, creating a really nice system of parks, future stormwater management facilities, and connecting links that will be used as the basis for your trails network. Next slide. This is really just telling you what I just said. However, what's important is that all of these land use designations, with the exception of the connecting link element, are found already in your 2022 official plan. As I mentioned at the beginning, the idea here is you have baseline policies, and then at the end of each of those sections, there are area-specific policies that apply just in the Complete Communities Plan area. That's the format that was set up in the 2022 plan, dealing with your other plan areas, and it's carried forward into the new document. Next slide. Like every plan area, there's a few interesting pieces that we have to think about specifically. The existing airport is an interesting one. Airports have impacts and requirements, and we were very happy to see the owners of the Hall and Landing airpark at the last public meeting, and they talked to us about what they would like to do. And what that means is, at this point, we're giving them a future development designation. However, while the airpark is in operation, there will be policies that have an impact on adjacent lands, mostly related to noise impact. Today, there are existing residential communities in proximity to that airport, and they do have requirements and they do have requirements for noise warnings registered on title. That kind of implementing tool will be included in the policy framework, dealing with the airport. In the same general area, we have the intersection of Old Young Street and Highway 11. The land use pattern that is proposed currently would require reconfiguration of that intersection. It's an interesting intersection, based on history. What we are doing in this plan is identifying that intersection for further study, likely requiring an environmental assessment to identify any reconfiguration that would support the level of development proposed by the plan. That could result in a couple of different things. Either a rethink of the proposed designations, because the intersection can't handle it, or a reconfiguration of the intersection, so that the proposed designations can work. Not specific to the plan, but in terms of implementing the plan, financial tools available to the municipality need to be updated and, in some cases, explored. The big three for me are always Parkland Dedication Bylaw. As I mentioned, we've got lots of new provincial legislation that affects parkland dedication. The 2022 official plan does not recognize all of those changes. So I provided an updated policy framework that facilitates the opportunity to use the tool to its maximum benefit. Certainly, with an area this large, your Parkland Dedication Bylaw needs to be brought up to date. Development charges are a key tool as well. As we are aware, there is significant municipal service infrastructure, public service facilities, emergency service facilities that are required to grow in lockstep with population and employment growth in this area. My expectation is that your development charge bylaw has not fully recognized all of these changes. We do have engineers on our team that are identifying and articulating the requirements and the preliminary costs for all of that work. And that will need to be part of either a new townwide development charge bylaw or an area-specific bylaw. The third one, which I don't think you've used yet, is another change to the Planning Act, as we have a new section. It's now called the Community Benefits Bylaw. And that provides the opportunity for higher-density forms of development to deliver funds for specified community benefits. All three of these financial tools require a study to both articulate what is covered by the various tools and what the generation of funds would be for each. So those are very important. Phasing policies are pretty crucial in this plan as well. I want to make sure that you have the tools available as a council to make informed decisions about how development will proceed. We have provincial requirements about intensification versus greenfield. But you have substantial greenfield development opportunity, both within existing plan areas, Queenstown, Sharon, Green Lane, as well as the new Complete Community Secondary Plan area. And it's important to ensure that things happen in lockstep with the provision of municipal service infrastructure, as well as public service facilities, including emergency facilities. Next slide. As I've told you every time I get a chance, the approval of the official plan that will now include the Complete Community Plan area is not the last step for planning this area. Certainly, we have established in the official plan the requirement for community design plans. Those community design plans are not plans under the Planning Act, but nonetheless will require council approval. Those plans include a whole host of elements that provide substantial detail on how each of the community design plan districts will develop, including mix of uses, height and density allocations, where the parks are, where the schools are, all sorts of detailed information to give you a really good idea of what they're going to look like when they're developed. Those community design plans then inform the next level of statutory planning approval, including draft plans of subdivision or condominium, and importantly, zoning. Certainly, there is a lot of work to do before development can proceed in the Complete Communities Plan area. And the processes are enshrined in the new official plan to ensure that all of that work is done to your satisfaction. My last slide. What are our immediate next steps? And as Mr. Krupnik identified, we have two public meetings coming up on October 16th. We're hoping then to finalize, after hearing comments from the public, to finalize the draft of the official plan that includes the Complete Communities Plan area. Once that draft document is ready for submission, we will release it to the public, to the region and other agencies, as well as to the Landowners Group, the Technical Advisory Committee, and importantly, the province. The province tells us they need 90 days to review. So during that 90 days, we will have lots of opportunity to carry on conversations with stakeholders to determine where the document needs to be refined, updated, improved. And we're always happy to do that. Again, following, receiving any comments from the province and updating the document based on stakeholder opportunities, we'll be looking to come back to council through the statutory public meeting processes, looking to adopt early in 2026. And once council adopts, then it goes back to the province for approval. I'd like to say 90 days, but I'll leave it at that. Thank you for listening to me, and I look forward to any questions.
Thank you. I am always impressed with the depth of your knowledge. Even though you don't live in our community, you're very intensely knowledgeable of our community. So at this point, before I open the floor to the questions, I just, we have a motion I'd like to put on the floor that we receive the report and presentation, and that we direct staff to continue engagement on the plan. And then the resolution is before us. May I have a motion, please? Moved by Counselor Carruthers. Thank you. All right, so we've got it on the floor now, and I'd like to open the floor to questions. And Counselor Carruthers, please go ahead.
Thank you. And I echo Counselor Roy DeClemente's words about you knowing our community. And I had a list of questions here, and you've ticked off a lot of them already. So I was kind of wondering if you could see my screen. But I wanted to just take a step back. This has generated a lot of public interest. There's a lot of misinformation floating around about what these plans are, what they mean, and that sort of thing. So I'm wondering if we can just do a quick planning 101, very short and sweet, about what the purpose of the OP is, why we have secondary plans, and why they're called complete communities. Is that something that you can do in like, less than a minute?
Absolutely not. That's three questions that are quite significant. I'll do my best to be short. An official plan is the primary document for a municipality to map out its long-term future. It sets the stage for much more detailed work to be done through the secondary plan process, your community design plan process, and then ultimately into the zoning bylaw and through draft plans of subdivision. The further down the chain of approvals you get, the more detail you get. An official plan is also a living document. They are amended all the time. Things change. While the planning horizon is 2051, you will be required to do a full review in five or 10 years, and you will deal with official plan amendments throughout. In terms of complete community, the idea of the complete community is a provincial requirement. The idea, and it's defined in the provincial planning statement. The idea is that there is opportunity to live, work, play, go to school, all in proximity. Proximity is loosely defined, and it doesn't preclude anything else or any other strategy. It's simply trying to provide opportunities. And that includes opportunities for mobility, as well as for land use and work. It's an idea that's been around for quite some time.
Thank you. I'll give you an A+. So I think that what I want, the reason for asking this question is I want people who are watching at home to understand that this is long-term planning, so that we're not planning in isolation, little bits here and there, but we have an overall roadmap of where we're going, literally. And the 50,000 people that these six community design districts will generate is not happening tomorrow. And it's not happening without further consultation as far as the community design plans and the individual site plans. So I just wanted to make that clear, and I appreciate your help in articulating that. Like I said, most of my questions have already been answered. When we added these white belt lands a number of years ago, I know that I was very vocal against that, because we wanted to, I felt the community needed to have the green space buffers between the communities. And you had said at that time that is something that we can look at in the secondary planning phase. So I want to reiterate the need that we're hearing from the community, well, I'm hearing from the community, that they want our communities to still be distinct communities with buffers between them. So that was the one comment I had. And then the one question I had was, how are the density targets arrived at?
Well, as you're aware, and through you, Madam Chair, this process is a collaborative one. We have been working closely with the Landowners Group, and of course, with council, with staff, with the Technical Advisory Committee. At the beginning of this process, we asked the development community to think about what their plans might be, what their aspirations were. And that's where the table comes from. Again, we looked at it. Where is East Gwinnberry? What are the requirements from provincial, and at the time, regional requirements for density? And we were generally consistent with those numbers. So we've been using those numbers. And they're extremely important to have an idea at the beginning of the process, because all of the technical engineering work, all of the work on retail and service commercial uses, community facilities, is based on those numbers, including schools. So we felt that they were in line with policy directions from the province, and at the time, the region. You know, you can have a discussion about one community design precinct versus another. But overall, achieving 65 persons and jobs per hectare seemed a reasonable point to begin.
Okay. And if council felt that wasn't reasonable, and we wanted a lower number, what happens?
Well, council decides. At the end of the day, I would hope that you would take into consideration urban structure, the need to create options for mobility, including transit, and how it all fits together. And remember, density is just a big number. How you achieve the density is the critical factor. And the density number itself can be achieved in many, many, many ways. You could have a community that is all four-story stacked townhouses and apartments. Or you could have single-detached, semi-detached townhouses, and then taller elements, and achieve exactly the same density. So it's a complicated number. The key is, though, that we need to match development targets with all of those important things: pipes, stormwater, community facilities, schools. Everything kind of fits together. And again, as I mentioned, Green Lane hits about 70 people and jobs per hectare. It includes two major transit station areas, which I expect creates the demand for density. But this is slightly less, and we felt it was an appropriate starting point.
Thank you.
Mr. Krupnik, you had indicated that you wanted to add some comments as well.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just to add that, we also, the numbers that we review are also ground truth through some of the studies that we do. So we look at the transportation network, the proposed land uses, and we have numerous kind of studies to see if, in fact, those density numbers can be achieved and can be operational at the community level. That's kind of one element. I will also say that our existing secondary plan areas have, excuse me, some of our older secondary plan areas have existing minimum density targets of 55 people and jobs per hectare. Green Lane has the highest, at 70 persons and jobs per hectare, which is probably appropriate, being its location within our community. And so this one finds a middle ground between those two numbers.
Thank you, Mr. Krupnik. I did want to just continue on that line of inquiry regarding people plus jobs. Our previous iteration of our OPs had employment targets and job targets of one job for every three people, if I'm not mistaken. Are we still retaining that? Because I understand, you know, the logic of, you know, in one particular area, you might have 2,000 people and jobs, but you're not distinguishing between whether those are employment or whether those are residents. And I understand that not necessarily putting it in a granular fashion into each of those six areas, but still having that high-level target is something that we, I quite frankly, was very proud of and wanted to continue to achieve, so that we could prevent ourselves from becoming a bedroom community.
Totally fair discussion to have. The province has removed the target out of the provincial planning statement. Overall, in Ontario, it used to be one job for two residents. East Gwinnberry, given its current context, was lower expectation-wise. So the focus on targets, which is an interesting conversation generally. Whenever we put targets in official plans, they're usually not correct. Things happen over time. What we're trying to do, and at the moment, I'm not considering a target. That doesn't mean there won't be one. My focus in your official plan is to make sure you've got a ready supply of employment land available and ready to accommodate future employers who wish to come to this community now that you're getting, have, and are getting more important transportation corridors. The Bradford bypass, in my mind, is a fundamental piece of that puzzle. Also, the requirements for non-residential floor space in terms of retail, service, commercial, public service facilities, schools, all of it, are important generators of jobs. public service facilities, schools, all of it, are important generators of jobs. The province always told us we have two kinds of jobs: population-related, and that's the retail, service, commercial, schools, all that stuff, and then employment land jobs, which are industrial business park. I want to make sure you have the potential to accommodate both. Absolutely, a target can be included, keeping in mind that targets can be aspirational elements of the plan, and there's nothing wrong with that. And absolutely, I agree, as a complete community, people need to have the option to work here. Doesn't mean they will. It simply means that there are jobs in your community. That's good for achieving complete communities. It's also good for your tax base.
So if we were to, you talk about making sure that we have sufficient employment lands. If we were to, if we've provided those and if they were to be fully built out and developed, would we hit that aspirational target?
I haven't done the math. My philosophy is more employment land is better. Having a big supply with different owners and different locations is the key to attraction. Many years ago, I worked with economic development people who said, "The industrial business park people want access and visibility." Bradford bypass, 404, fundamentally important pieces of that puzzle. The other stuff comes with population growth. Do you have enough employment land? Predicting that is a difficult game, because the density of employment land, given that the province has also put restrictions on the types of uses that can go in employment areas, for example, no standalone office space, the densities are tending to be quite low. Certainly, logistics warehouses don't generate a lot of jobs compared to the space that they consume. So the idea is get as many as you can, but you have to have land. One of the reasons that I talked about those four other areas that, to get into your settlement area, is that there's a significant component adjacent to the Bradford bypass and at the Bradford bypass 404 interchange, which are absolutely ideal locations for employment lands. More is better, and the province recognizes that. In the provincial planning statement, they tell us that we can plan for employment areas for a much longer planning horizon. We're not restricted by the 2051. So I think there's a good reason to consider those lands. At the end of the day, they're critical elements for future economic development, in my opinion.
Thank you. I would absolutely support having the aspirational target embedded into our policy documents. So, thank you. Councillor Foster and then Councillor Leahy, go ahead, please.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Mr. Palmer, again, thanks. Your presentation answers a lot of questions. I believe your ward meetings answered a lot of questions for me also. When I look at these plans and I sometimes read them twice. I read them as a councillor and then I try to read them as a resident. And when I look at some of the things, and I think you may, a couple of quick statements, let's put it that way. I think you may hear some things at the public consultation, and so part of the vision statement says that we support and celebrate a high quality of life for our current and future I think to myself, and I've heard from other people, some of our developments certainly don't reflect that. I'm not sure how we fight that, but that may come up at the information session. The other thing I wanted to mention was, you know, you just mentioned the Bradford bypass and Highway 404. That's all farmland around there, and in the plan, there's mentioned about the agricultural impact assessment. I would love the opportunity to sit down and have a better chat with you about that, because I'm interested to know, and I'm a little confused, our official plan and our strategy speak to farmland and agricultural use, but the province wants housing, so we're up against a fight with that. Not long ago, we received information from a federal MP, and I can't remember the name, about support for saving farmland in the world's food source. So we're caught squarely in the middle. It's very conflicting, and I never hear about any developments that are turned down because they're sitting on fertile farmland. I'm not sure that you can speak to that, but for some reason, I think that here we are hanging in the middle, waiting for the residents to take a chop at us, and waiting for the province to reach in and say, "No, this is great development and you will do it." Am I on the right track?
Absolutely. Through you, Madam Chair. That's a big question. I'm going to give you a bit of history first. Back in the day, I'm going to say, at least when I started in the early 80s, the requirement to expand an urban boundary was a requirement specifically from the Ministry of Agriculture and Food. And their tests for when it was appropriate to expand an urban boundary are fundamentally what they remain today, which is you don't just get to say, "We're going to do this." You have to go through a fair bit of work to do that, and it's about balance. Yes, we have need for urban land in a growing community like the Greater Golden Horseshoe, and yes, there is a desire to retain and protect agricultural resources. In dealing with the balance, we do have on the team a consultant who's doing an agricultural impact study. They have not looked at those other four land areas yet. They will, because it will be a requirement for us to justify that expansion. At the end of the day, the complete community's plan area is designated for urban development. Sorry. It was through the regional official plan, which is being brought forward through your new official plan, and there's a lot of expectations about that. So the conversation about agricultural impact, I'm interested, I haven't seen their report yet, but I expect to see it in the coming days. And I will be interested in seeing what they say. Farming is not the same as it was in 1983. We still have farmland that is protected in East Gwillingbury by the Green Belt Plan. That's why these four sites are interesting, because they were not included as part of the protected countryside. They're kind of unique anomalies, and I think it's because of their previous identification as white belt lands. So in terms of the initial white belt, that was a statement for the future that was not But nonetheless, it's a balance. Absolutely, agricultural land is critical to our survival, but not all of it. And it's a very important decision to make.
Thank you very much. Councillor Leahy, go ahead.
Thank you very much. Through you, Madam Chair. I'd like to pick up on something that you said in terms of how it all fits together, because as an elected town councillor for Ward Three of East Gwillingbury as a whole, this, none of Ward Three, which is Mount Albert and an extensive rural area, is included in this particular secondary plan, and I wanted to gain from you an understanding of how the two separate secondary plans are fitting together. Because I'm elected in Ward Three, but I represent all of East Gwillingbury, so today we're talking about things focused in Wards One and Ward Two, but geographically, Ward Three is actually larger. And so when we're talking about community benefits and starting a community benefits policy, et cetera, I would like a clearer understanding, and for the benefit of the residents of Ward Three, how the secondary plan that we're considering now is fitting with the secondary plan that already exists from Ward Three.
Through you, Madam Chair. Thank you for the question. Mount Albert is a very unique piece of East Gwillingbury. Today, it can't grow beyond its existing boundaries. It's completely surrounded by the protected countryside of the Green Belt Plan. And just so you know, and this is partly dealt with in your official plan, we have so many layers of provincial policy in play here in East Gwillingbury. The Green Belt Plan, the Oakridges Marine Plan, the Lake Simcoe Protection Plan, and then all the regular planning stuff. Mount Albert is completely surrounded on three sides by protected countryside of the Green Belt Plan, and on one side by the Oakridges Marine Plan. It is not going to get geographically larger. There is some development potential that remains, and that will develop over time as things occur. Interestingly, you bring up the community benefits bylaw. Old Section 37 used to have an implied statement, and that was, just in case you wanted to know, the height and density bonusing provision of the Planning Act, which fundamentally the city of Toronto used. Not very many other municipalities used it. It had some inherent requirement that the community benefit generated was in support of the development that provided it. That requirement is not part of new Section 37. New Section 37 is a requirement for new development, and I think it has to be at least medium density or high density. The study that you have to do will determine how much. The maximum is 4% of land value, which in an urban context is significantly higher than a rural context. The study has to identify the types of community benefits that will be funded by the charge, but it does not require a nexus. It doesn't need to be in the area it was generated. It can be town-wide. So it's simply a fund to help the community of East Gwillingbury build community benefits.
Thank you very much, and I have one follow-up question, if I may. That's exactly why I brought it up, because we're talking about all kinds of networks, whether they be trails, whether they be transportation networks. Currently, Mount Albert is very much isolated, and in terms of the opening of the new Health and Active Living Plaza, we don't have a direct bus system to take residents of Mount Albert to enjoy the facilities of the Health and Active Living Plaza, for example, that are permanent. So if you don't have a car or you don't have another way of getting there, if you're a teenager or a senior or whatever the circumstances are. So what we feel, and what you may get as feedback when you host your public information sessions, is this, and it's already been given to me, because you had a public information session and people came out and you shared maps, and residents from Mount Albert came out and they were dismayed to see that we weren't even on this map, that we weren't included in this secondary plan that's being created for East Gwillingbury. So I think it's important to remember that East Gwillingbury as a whole is affected by this, and it's my job as an elected representative of Ward Three to stand up and fight for the needs of the community in Ward Three. So what I would like to ask you is, in terms of the community benefits, if I'm hearing what you're saying clearly, is if we start a bylaw, if we create a bylaw about community benefits, that benefits that are reaped from new facilities in other wards can potentially be reinvested in Mount Albert, for example?
Absolutely true.
Yes, and nothing is written in stone in that it's entirely, these are just ideas that you've put forward, so.
And you need to do the study.
Yes.
To articulate what would be, what could be included.
Yes.
And how much the charge will be typically.
Yes.
And again, it's pretty new, but Section 37 is usually a check now, instead of the developer building a community benefit as part of their development.
Okay.
So it's more of a financial piece than it used to be, and again, you will need to articulate the kinds of things that you are going to be using the money for. Probably that needs to be included in the official plan. We can't do that yet, because I don't want to predetermine the outcome of your study, but absolutely, it's a town-wide opportunity.
So, thank you for clarifying that. So in terms of town-wide opportunities, though, we're focusing solely on Wards One and Wards Two, basically, and in which you have presented, and please correct me if I did not hear the fact, or if it's in the report and I missed it when I was reading it, but you have suggested and basically recommended that East Gwillingbury have three additional library branches, but I didn't hear about a fire station in your report.
Well, my understanding is you have a fire master plan, and that will be the overriding document that tells us what we need. We weren't doing emergency service requirements. We'll be looking for the fire chief and other emergency services to tell us, to tell you what they need over time. I can tell you, public service facilities, emergency service facilities are permitted everywhere. So the way the secondary plan deals with it, which is, in fact, a town-wide policy, is when you need them, build them. And there's no specific restriction in the plan, and I'm talking about the official plan, that tells you where.
Very good. And one last question, if I may. This is an important question as we are heading into the budget process this fall. And what budget considerations should we keep in mind when we're deciding on the 2026 budget in, when we vote on it in December? What would you suggest, with your experience and background, that we keep in mind when we're making those budgetary decisions, as it could potentially affect the secondary plan as it is right now?
The secondary plan goes to 2051, correct?
Yes, like the whole official plan.
Yes.
That doesn't mean it will all be built by then. It just means that that's the planning horizon.
However, I still would like my question answered, please. My question was, when we head into this year's, next year's budget of 2026, what should councillors, what do you suggest, keep in mind when we're going through the budgetary process, as it might potentially affect the long-term planning of the secondary plan?
Through you, Madam Chair. I believe I mentioned the three things that I would be doing, and that is updating your development charges bylaw, also preparing a community benefits background report to support the community benefits bylaw. Parkland dedication, in order to utilize the new opportunities in the Planning Act, requires specifically a parks plan. So they specifically require a parks plan, but they don't tell you what that is. Many municipalities have already done them and have written new parkland dedication bylaws in order to maximize the opportunity. I know that the Parks Department has done a bunch of work. I don't know if it qualifies as a parks plan that would justify the use of the alternative parkland dedication rate. That sounds very technical, but I think it would be worth exploring that as a budget item to do that work.
Thank you very much. That's very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Palmer. I just, before I turn the mic over to Councillor Johns for questions, I just wanted to point out perhaps as a point of trying to be out, perhaps as a point of trying to be helpful, Councillor Leahy, when we're talking about the secondary plan process, we're not talking about wards or ward boundaries. And the reality is that the employment lands we were talking about earlier would provide jobs in our community, and it doesn't matter what ward you live in, you would still be able to participate in our local economy. And so this is not about one community having more resources over another. This is about planning for our future as an entire community. So I'll just...
Thank you very much for that. I, thank you very much for that, Madam Chair. I raised the question because I feel it's very important when we have the opportunity during a public meeting for members of the other wards to understand why they were not literally on the map we were discussing. Thank you very much.
So that's why I was trying to help you, and there was no need for you to respond. Thank you. Councillor Johns, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for being here today. I always appreciate your delivery. I was sitting here, and I was picturing what your voice would look like visually, and I likened it to pouring maple syrup on my kid's pancakes. Your delivery was like smooth and sweet. And I will just say, I am probably one of the few Canadians that will jump at the maple syrup, but I kind of stick to my butter, but you are, I sincerely appreciate how you deliver to us. And so, one of the things that was mentioned here was talking about preventing us from being a bedroom community. And the fact is, is that currently, like how I grew up and how we are today, we still are that bedroom community. And I think that it is incumbent upon ourselves, as we go through this process, to wholly champion the ability to ensure the quality of life for the existing residents today while we're protecting our existing neighborhoods. One of the things that you have delivered to us loud and clear is the opportunity to review that parks, that parks bylaw and parks dedication. I wholly champion that. The thing is, is that when we had our individual meetings, and that was very beneficial to me, it struck me about our conversation that we had about the trail connectivity, and how there was that gap that existed, just very briefly, on the north side going into Queenstown, and hopefully, we can address that outside of the secondary plan with folks that are already owning that land, as this comes to unfold, and then further addressing that connectivity along Don Road as well. And then, lastly, just as a comment to buttress your call-out that we need to review that, the parks dedication and ensuring that we can maximize the opportunity, is you had it in your report, but I'm not necessarily sure you flagged it, was the Eco Park regarding the lagoons that will eventually be decommissioned. I think that is such an incredibly huge opportunity for East Goulambury, to be able to support something like that. We already have an existing provincial prairie park within East Goulambury that I don't feel that we are currently leveraging enough. And so I just, I know we've had a pile of time here this morning, but if you could just touch briefly on the ecological part, I would sincerely appreciate that, because I think it's such an important part of the piece of the puzzle. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, through you, Madam Chair. The idea of the Eco Park came up through conversations as we're working through this process, mostly because I was trying to figure out what to put those sewage lagoons in, what designation should they be? And I've driven by them a few times, and you look at it, and it looks like an Eco Park. There's all kinds of flora and fauna in there that look like they're living their best It's an interesting piece. It's surrounded, on a couple of sides anyway, by environmental features. I know it's owned by the region. I know, at least I've been told, it's still operational, but there is an intent that it eventually be decommissioned. When it is decommissioned, what does it become? And I saw it as an opportunity, not necessarily to augment the active park space, because it's not intended that it be active, but it's a great opportunity to have something like that, that could be an educational, an ecological educational piece, could include trails, networks, very passive types of things. But those are things that people enjoy. Those are things that should be conserved here in your municipality. It's not the same as an active park, but it's certainly something that augments the environmental element, as well as the open space element. How you get it? Well, that's going to be a conversation between the town and the region. I don't know what level of site remediation would be required to allow public access. It could be a gift that costs too much. But at the end of the day, I think it's worth the look. It's a really interesting part of this community.
Thank you for that. I did, before I, we've talked a little bit, I know we've spent a long time on this. I think this is an important topic, and so I appreciate your...
I've got till eight o'clock.
Okay.
I have to be out here.
We've spoken quite a bit about parkland and parkland dedication, and there was also a bit of information in, I think it was on Slide Twelve, regarding community centers and the square footage needed and so on. And I just wanted to give Mr. Carmazin an opportunity, if he wanted to, to speak to some of the work that his department might be doing in conjunction with this process.
Thank you, through you, Madam Chair. Staff, including planning staff and Parks, Recreation and Culture staff, is considering the recent changes to the Development Planning Act, as well as Bill Twenty-Three related to parkland dedication. In particular, any changes that would affect our current and next phases of development, as you've seen here today with the secondary planning works. And we are looking at what implications there may be with our parks dedication bylaw, as well as our D.C. background study. With regards to the location of facility amenities and parks and trails, the location and type of community centers, parks and desire lines for trails and active transportation would need to be validated through our next phase of our Parks and Recreation Master Plan, and our updated and revised Active Transportation and Trails Master Plan. So these are placeholders, and there would be more work, again, to, you know, further validate the location, as well as the type of facilities and amenities that are being proposed.
Thank you for that, Mr. Carmazin, and I feel the same way about the commentary on the library. I want to make sure that the council-approved growth plan for the library is also incorporated into this document, and allow for both Parks and Culture and the library to be able to chart their own course based on their needs, rather than a calculation that came out of the secondary plan process. So I would feel comfortable having some of that granularity removed, and maybe giving some larger, some larger numbers, rather than, or guidelines, rather than specificity. So just a bit of feedback for you there. Councillor Leahy, please go ahead.
Thank you very much, through you, Madam Chair. I would like to say that what I know is that the next couple of years are very challenging financially for the municipals' economies throughout the province, and we are facing unprecedented challenges in terms of revenue. And so I would like to remind everybody that while it is wonderful to have dreams and ambitions and ideas about what we would like to have, it's most important that we remember to focus on the needs, rather than necessarily the wants of all of these communities within East Goulambury.
Thank you, councillor. Is there any further comments or questions that are needed at this time? Seeing none, I have a motion on the floor as presented from Councillor Carethers, that we proceed with our thanks, Mr. Palmer.
Thank you.
All those in favor? And that motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much. You'll see me again soon.
We look forward to it. Thank you. So at this point, we're now at about ninety minutes in. Just looking for an indication from members of committee if they feel they need a bio-break or a leg stretch? Yes? Okay, so I'm going to call a recess, and we'll return at eleven thirty-five. Okay? Thank you. Got the high sign, so we're ready to go. Thank you very much. So we're resuming, resuming our CWC, uh, agenda uh, for this morning. Uh, we have completed item G one and we're now on item G two, uh, which is, uh, Development Services Planning Branch Presentation and Report, uh, Regarding Draft, Share and Heritage Conservation District Plan and Guidelines. Uh, so, um, Mr. Krubnik, would you care to introduce this item for us, please?
Uh, thank you very much, Madam Chair. I have, uh, with us today as well Ben Holthoff from, uh, LHC, uh, Heritage Planning and Archaeology. Um, he will be providing a presentation on the Heritage Conservation District Plan and Guidelines to council this mo- this morning. Yes, we are still mourning. And, um, as well, uh, Ben, I just want to make the council, council also aware and the public also aware that we are going to do a public information session on this item on October twenty-ninth of, so that's this month, October twenty-ninth, uh, at our municipal offices, um, between the hours of three and five P M and seven and nine P M. At this point, I'll pass it over. Uh, at this point, I'll pass it over to Ben. Thank you.
Welcome, Ben. Uh, please, uh, take us through your, uh, presentation.
Thank you. Good morning, Madam Chair and members of council. Uh, so my name is Ben Holthoff. I've been the project manager on the Heritage Conservation District Study and Plan Process, uh, so far, and it's nice to see you all again. If I can go to the next slide, please. So just for a quick reminder to everybody, since it's been a year since we wrapped up the Heritage Conservation, uh, District Study and, and council-directed staff and us to continue on to the second phase, the plan and guidelines. Uh, the map on the screen shows you the HCD area that, uh, we're working with. The, the dark green properties are ones where a couple of, uh, several of the evaluation criteria were met. The lighter green ones are ones where, uh, a single one for contextual value were met. And the gray ones are properties that are classified as non-contributing, which doesn't mean they don't fit. It just means that they didn't meet any of the heritage, uh, criteria that we found. The areas conveys a collective sense of heritage. It includes a historic core village with, with many properties with significant historical associations. Uh, it's generally visually unified. Um, there are gateway properties and views at the ends, um, and, uh, and similar sizes of buildings and similar character and vegetation throughout. Uh, it's largely residential with some commercial use of residential form buildings, some institutional properties. Uh, so there's a, there's a good mix of, of village, uh, in this, in the area. Uh, next slide, please. So when we're developing a heritage conservation district plan and guidelines, this slide presents the, the requirements of the Ontario Heritage Act. Uh, and that's all from section forty-one. Uh, so it needs to have a statement of objectives. Uh, it needs to have a statement explaining the cultural heritage value or interest. It needs to have a description of the heritage attributes and the, of the district and the properties in the district. It needs to have policy statements, guidelines, and procedures for achieving the objectives. And it needs to have a description of the alterations or classes of alterations that are minor, uh, and that, uh, may or may not need a heritage permit. So that's what has been required. The entire HCD plan is structured to meet these requirements. Next slide, please. So here's a brief introduction to the content of the HCD plan that we have developed so far. Uh, first chapter, basic introduction to the plan. Um, the second chapter is a very brief history. It's, it's drawn largely from the information that was in the HCD study, but it's been condensed even further. It's, it's enough to provide an understanding of the heritage, uh, history of the district. Um, it's not intended to replace all the work that was done in the study or any other histories that have been done, but it's, it's a, it's a very brief summary. We have an illustrated description of the heritage character, the cultural heritage values, the heritage attributes of the HCD. So this is designed to meet that section forty-one point one five B and C requirements. We also have additional information in an appendix to the HCD, the draft HCD plan. Uh, chapter four is the goals and objectives for the heritage, heritage conservation district, uh, which meets section forty-one point one five A. Uh, it's largely the same as what was included in the Heritage Conservation District Study, uh, with a few little tweaks. Uh, complex thoughts have been divided into two points instead of one. Um, but fundamentally, it's, it's the same goals and objectives that, uh, were considered and, uh, as part of the study. Chapter five is a number of apologies policies for managing change. Uh, that also meets what's required in the Heritage Act. Uh, chapter six is guidelines to inform heritage conservation and decision-making. Uh, and chapter seven is some implementation guidance for the plan. So including a description of what kind of consultation people can expect or are recommended to go through, uh, what the heritage permit application process should be, uh, when change is pro- proposed for properties in the HCD. Um, it includes different types of projects that do or do not require heritage permits and a description of exemptions and, and emergency processes. Uh, next slide, please. Now, the, the draft plan that we have put together right now is by no means complete. It is based on everything we learned in the study and based on everything we've heard throughout the process of developing the plan from consulting with town staff and, uh, early in the year with members of the heritage committee through staff. It's been developed to try to meet what was identified as, as what would work, uh, what, what the town was looking for in a heritage conservation district plan. Fundamentally, the policies and guidelines are there to support the goals and objectives that have been previously developed. Uh, we expect change in the Heritage Conservation District. The policies are intended to enable the town to manage that change, to provide consistent decision-making when it comes to applications for changes. Uh, Sharon is a really interesting place because over the last two centuries, a dozen new properties, new buildings were, were added roughly every decade. Uh, so it has seen constant change for two hundred years. Uh, it's, uh, and we very much wanna have tried to develop a plan that, uh, works with that, that history and, and into the future. Uh, the policies in the plan are, are much more strictly written there. They have language that is shall and must generally. Um, not, not always. Uh, the guidelines in the plan are, are just that guidelines. They, uh, have recommendations. They encourage, suggest, um, use should language. Um, so the guidance is intended to ensure that projects are compatible or sympathetic to the heritage character of the HCD overall. And it also includes policies that, and guidance that will specifically apply to municipal properties and projects in, in the, in the district. Uh, next slide, please. So this is the work that we have done so far. The study phase is behind us. Uh, council decided to create NHCD or consider it. Um, your official plan has provisions for creating a heritage conservation district. Uh, that's in section six point three. Uh, the HCD study was prepared over twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four, and council decided to proceed with the plan and guidelines last October. Uh, and then over the last year, uh, we've worked on determining the general format, describing the culture hedge value, working on goals and objectives a little bit, uh, and developing the policy guidelines and implementation tools. And it's the, the policy guidelines and implementation tools that we're working through now. Next slide, please. So we have put, uh, put policies and guidelines in that we think will work for the town, that will work to meet those goals and objectives. Uh, and right now we are into the consult, we're into the consultation. So today we're introducing the plan to you and to the community. And, and as Jack mentioned earlier, we'll have a, a public information sessions coming up in, uh, later in the month. So right now we're into that first box where we're introducing the draft plan. Uh, municipal staff have had it. Uh, it's been brought to the attention of the Heritage Advisory Committee. We're introducing it to you today and, and then introducing it to the community. And, uh, we're very much looking for feedback, input, commentary. Uh, so far commentary and, and input has been, uh, sent to municipal staff who forwarded on to us. So that's how things have been working. Uh, now and in, over the next few weeks, um, municipal staff, heritage advisory, community members, the community, uh, can have an opportunity to review the plan, to give us input, uh, save up their input for the community information session coming up. Um, we, we've asked staff to, uh, post the draft plan on municipal website for this project. Um, and we'll be accepting that feedback. Uh, the open house opportunity is coming up and, uh, a consultant team and staff will have people there to engage with community members. And then we will, uh, make any revisions that are, uh, necessary and, and integrate that engagement into the, the plan and, and advisor as needed. Uh, next slide, please. So the next steps after, after the next few weeks and, and months is, uh, that there will be a statutory public meeting. Uh, that's section forty-one point one six of the Ontario Heritage Act. Um, then if, hopefully, we're at the point now with plan is, is complete or nearly complete. If there are revisions required, those will be made. Uh, and then the plan will be presented to the Heritage Advisory Committee so that they can make a formal, uh, recommendation and provide their advice to council. And council considers the plan and, and by law. And, uh, if council decides to proceed with designating the heritage conservation district, bylaws passed. Uh, if not, the plan and, and study gets shelved and uh, municipality uses them as they, they need in the future for information or, or whatever. Uh, if there are objections, uh, to, to the decision to designate the heritage conservation district, um, council reconsideres, uh, decides yes or no. Um, and, and if there's still objections, uh, then it can be appealed, uh, to the Ontario Land Tribunal. So there's, there's a number of steps yet to go, but, uh, but right now we're into that kind of engagement and figuring out how things are gonna work. Uh, next slide. But we are looking for, we very much want to hear feedback and input, uh, and, uh, we're expecting this public information session on the twenty-ninth, uh, as Jack mentioned, between three and five, and again at seven and nine. The plan should be up on the town's website so that people can take a look at it and, uh, and then throughout the process, we're, we're accepting feedback. And again, as I mentioned, through through emails and messages, phone calls to the town's planning branch, uh, and then, uh, they forward those on to us and we integrate them into the, into what we know and, and how we've developed things. And that's my, my presentation for today. If anybody has questions.
Uh, thank you very much, Mr. Holthoff. Uh, so we have a resolution in front of us, uh, that we receive the presentation and report, uh, and that we can, the direct staff to continue engagement on the plan and guidelines to, and to rework the draft document as necessary to finalize the draft Heritage Conservation District Plan and Guidelines as outlined in the report. And that council direct staff to draft a bylaw to formally designate the area as a heritage conservation district under part five of the Ontario Heritage Act. May I have a motion? Thank you. Counselor Foster. Okay, um, members of committee, any questions? Impressive. You, you've done such a great job of, uh, of outlining where we're at so far in this process. That doesn't look like, uh, committee has any questions. So, um, seeing none. Oh, go ahead, Counselor Johns.
Just looking at my calendar as it related to the, uh, the, the meeting that you're gonna be holding for information on the twenty-ninth. And as I was, uh, making sure that it was in my calendar, getting in there, I was thinking about, uh, notice and being delivered to, uh, folks. So are, from a communications aspect through you, uh, Madam Chair, um, social media, letters, like given the strike, how are we, um, are we sending notices out to the folks that are affected? Like, how are we communicating with these folks?
Mr. Krubnik, that's an excellent question. Can you help with that?
Through you, Madam Chair, yes. Um, so we are using our, um, you know, usual media channels through our communication staff. Uh, we have also, um, uh, we, I, so apologies on the notice itself, the one that we typically rely on, uh, Canada Post for. The acting GM Development Services will be hand-delivering those to the doors within the HCD district. So-
Did you say the acting chair?
Acting GM.
GM, okay. Cause I, I was like, wait a second.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll be hand-delivering those to, uh, to, uh, to each door within the HCD, uh, district itself. Uh, and we do have a compiled list of email contacts as well for the HCD so that they will be notified via email as well.
Okay, so we've got emails for those who have, have reached out throughout this process and they will get an email and there will be hand-delivered notices as well as the town's usual channels.
That's right.
To paraphrase.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you for raising that, Counselor Johns. That was an excellent question. All right, so, um, seeing no further questions, I've got a motion from Counselor Foster. All those in favor? And that motion carries. Thank you very much. Um, the next item we have, uh, thank you again, Mr. Holthoff, uh, much appreciated. Uh, the next item we have is Development Services Planning Branch Presentation and Report, DS twenty twenty-five dash twenty-eight regarding the draft built heritage strategy. I note that, uh, Counselor Johns has declared an interest here and for the record, Madam Clerk, I, I believe you have that already, uh, in our minutes. Um, so what that means is, uh, just for purposes of, uh, voting, we will, uh, given our absences, we will need three peoples to support this to move forward. So I just wanna put that out there for consideration. And, uh, I will turn the microphone over to you, Mr. Krubnik. I believe you have, uh, another subject matter, matter expert on, uh, on the line to walk us through this.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Absolutely. Uh, I have with me today, um, Sean Good Eve, who has been, uh, of Good Eve and Associates, who has been, um, uh, on this heritage strategy since, I believe, twenty twenty-four with Development Services. He's been retained at that point and continues to work with us to deliver this heritage strategy to the community. Um, I will reiterate that, uh, just for clarity, that this heritage strategy will also be at a public information session, um, alongside the Heritage Conservation District, uh, Plan and Guidelines. So we are doing, uh, essentially a two and one, um, public information consultation on this item here at the, uh, at the Civic Centre, again, on October twenty-ninth between the hours of three and five P M and seven and nine P M. And, uh, both, uh, Ben and, um, both Ben and Sean will be also available in person to do that presentation and to interact with our community.
So it's a buy one, get one, is what you're saying?
It is, yeah. So please come on out.
Yeah, it sounds like it would be really helpful for us to see how the build heritage strategy might interact with our, our HCD. And so those two documents working in lockstep would be helpful. Uh, so I will turn, uh, things over to Mr. Good Eve. Thank you very much for joining us today. And, uh, I'll let you, uh, walk us through your presentation.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair and, and members of council. Um, and, uh, thanks very much, I'd say, as a, as a mechanic involved in the, in the plan, I really enjoyed uh, the discussion, uh, this morning on, on both those, uh, earlier topics. Uh, as Jack-
Mr. Good Eve, could I just ask you to pause for a moment? And we wanna just, uh, the clerk has indicated that your audio is not excellently, not coming through very clearly. You're a little muffled.
Okay. Let's, uh-
Do you happen to have a, do you happen to have a headset, Mr. Good Eve?
Uh, I can certainly try that. Shall we take a moment to pause and make-
Yes, please.
Deal directly with the clerk to get it ready?
Thank you. I'll take a brief pause. Thank you.
Okay, let's see if this is better.
I think that seems to be a lot better, actually, Mr. Good Eve.
Perfect. Okay, great.
That's great. Thank you for doing that for us. And thank you for getting up so early this morning to speak to us.
It's my pleasure. It's my pleasure. And yeah, my apologies about the the technical technological challenge here. I guess I'm kidding. And assuming my idea is okay at this point?
We're still having some issues understanding what you're saying coming through.
Oh, boy. Okay.
Through you, Madam Chair, Mr. Good Eve, perhaps you, if if you wanted to, you can leave the meeting and rejoin. I'm not sure if that's going to assist. Alternatively, there is a phone number available in the meeting invite. We can perhaps leverage that as an opportunity to for you to call into the meeting.
Okay, yeah, that sounds great.
What's your, would you prefer to present it yourself? Let's try this one more time if, since he's in back in the meeting. And if this doesn't work, then Mr. Kravnik has offered to walk us through the presentation. You know what, let's, Mr. Kravnik, if you wouldn't mind walking through this, thank you very much for your flexibility and let's just, let's walk through this. I know we've we've had an opportunity to. Every member of councils had an opportunity to speak with Mr. Good Eve and and should have some familiarity with the strategy as it stands. And so this is just an update. So please go ahead.
Sure, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Let's go to the second slide, please. Okay, so and and again, this is, I believe, the the third time this strategy is before council. There was a couple of occasions in twenty twenty four, and two occasions, I believe, were to came before council. And this is the, we are now coming back to council in twenty twenty five and hoping to kind of move this forward even to a kind of a. Maybe more of a finalized step. Just to give you a quick overview of what we'll be looking at today, obviously, council did receive the heritage strategy itself. I will be guiding or providing some guidance on that strategy itself and how it's kind of laid out to council. And at the very end, just giving you a work plan to how we achieve to or how we intend to achieve to deliver this product by, I believe it's Q one of next year. Next slide, please. Okay, so I believe at this point in time as well, Sean Good Eve has met with members of council. By word to essentially go through some of the the built form, built heritage strategy and how it's essentially laid out, some of the strategies that are being proposed within it. There have been a couple of prior council interviews on this and and this one as well. We do intend to come back to the public. In a couple of months' time and we can, we are certainly open to having more of those direct kind of discussions with members of council as well, if if it is required as well. Heritage Advisory Committee was, we did seek feedback from them in September of of this year. And they provided us some feedback as well. And we do intend to return back to the HAC, I believe, in November of this year. Next slide, please. And essentially, these are the four strategic priorities. Protect and conserve East Goulambury's built heritage. Celebrate East Goulambury's built heritage. Support the town's Heritage Advisor Committee. And number four is cultivate strategic partnerships. Within the heritage strategy that was provided with the agenda, there are a series of strategic initiatives that are essentially outlined within each of these strategic priorities. So these are the headers. And within each of these headers, we have. Strategies that were proposed to implement in the near term, in the kind of a middle term, and also the long term outlook. So next slide, please. And and obviously, I'm not going to go through the the text here, but that is. Essentially what is outlined for priority number one. And again, it's protecting and conserving East Goulambury's built heritage. And I I'm actually going to go to the next slide just to give you an indication of how that strategy is kind of shaping up. And so this is essentially the the work chart or flow chart of that strategy. And right now on the left side as well, too, you see this just page one. I'm not going to go through each page, just show you page one to show you the kind of columns and headers we have to kind of lead us through the strategy. And on the left side, you do see that they are numbered one point one, one point two, one point three. Those are in green. The green indicates that we intend to address these issues before the end of December the thirty first, twenty twenty six. In within the strategy as well, we have a color yellow, which is the next term of council essentially. Would be January first of twenty twenty seven, up to the end of December in twenty thirty one. And then orange is our kind of a long term horizon. Next slide, please. And again, with when, although we are focusing predominantly on East Goulambury's built heritage, I will say that in the medium and long term, we do have some strategies that. Or a number of strategy actually that involve partnerships with our with our internal kind of departments and our within E E G. So that might be the library, that might be finance, that may be. Parks Recreation as well, or our communication staff or I T. Now, the 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 strategies themselves in the mid and long term have not yet been defined in terms of the kind of the finer points of how they are to be executed. That will be handled in the term in which they are going to, we are going to tackle them. So right now, the strategy itself is to essentially outline. Outline what we intend to do to to what we intend to do and have council know what we intend to do. But the plan for how we intend to do it will be tackled in the term in which we are going to be tackling the strategy. So the strategy, the built form heritage is not intended to provide those details yet, but is intended to provide guidance on what will be tackled and when it will be tackled. And again, even though it says built form heritage or built heritage strategy, we are going to be engaging with our community and our First Nations communities as well. On some of the kind of oral traditions, some of the written traditions as well that we may have in our community that we can. Piggyback on to kind of to do a little kind of story timer show and tell with our community in terms of how E G has developed over time to get to where we are today. Next slide, please. So again, the 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 near term is when is those kind of green items as well in the strategy. And they are in the agenda for the public and council to review. And those are identified in in green and those are. Some of those are updating the town's website. Some of those will be also creating a kind of benefits of designation fact sheet. You know, some of that is in kind of draft format and we intend to kind of move move that forward next year and continue to kind of finalize that for the benefit of the community. We also will, council will get an opportunity within the strategy as well to direct staff to kind of look at prioritizing. Some of our, some of our sorry, listed properties so that we can move forward with designation prior to the end of twenty twenty six. Because council may be aware, and if you're not, that at the end of twenty twenty six, all the properties we have on our heritage register must be removed from the heritage register. Unless we seek designation for for those properties. And right now, I believe it's it's. It's about three hundred and ninety listed properties. And so, sorry, mixed and listed and designated. So we do need to determine what we intend to designate in the next calendar year. Again, beyond twenty twenty seven are kind of would be orange, kind of medium term, next term of council and and. And then also, oh, sorry, yellow. And then orange would be long term, a five year and greater outlook. Next slide, please. Some of these priority three in terms of supporting the town's Heritage Advisor Committee is is things we do presently in terms of some being. We have a staff, a staff person attending each of those meetings as well. And they are helping to to assist with some of the minutes and recommendations that go on in the committee. But we do intend to kind of to continue to kind of formalize some of the processes with the committee and and to improve our training with the committee as well. So they're valuable contributors to our community and our into our council in terms of the recommendations. So we do want to formalize some of the processes and procedures we have with the committee and and include them in some of the heritage strategy components. Our next slide, please. Again, so some of this near term again would be updating the HAC terms of reference. And and designating and determining which properties to focus their attention on. It does take some time and some and some financial resources to do the designation because ideally we do engage someone like LHC. Heritage planners to do things like heritage impact assessments so that we know, in fact, what we are designating and why we are designating it. And beyond twenty twenty seven as well, that that heritage register will become much simpler. And so we'll just maintain it, keep it up to date and make sure everything on there is accurate and to the best of our of our knowledge. And some of those actions also include the heritage plaques and and how we continue to work with it. And do we obtain a can somebody who installs them? And and can we also promote them better through the avenues and channels we have? Next slide, please. And finally, priority number four is cultivating strategic partnerships. And and again, some of these are, I believe, in priority number four, they're kind of more medium and long term outlooks. Within the within the built heritage strategy, so. And and I will actually ask if you could go to the next slide, I think, to just assist some of the discussion. So again, looking at how we can engage our HAC, our community. In creating kind of more tourism related or wayfinding related kind of. Items for for the. For our community, sorry, how to how to best kind of amplify the heritage resources we have. And some of that is through also engaging in G I S mapping of these resources, engaging in perhaps pamphlets that we can distribute. So that people can be made aware and where they are located and perhaps even create events in which people may be able to visit some of these destinations. And learn a little bit of the history of these places. And next slide, please. Again, just the work plan here now that was touched upon at the beginning of the presentation. I believe I made it clear that on October twenty ninth, this built for built heritage strategy as well as the Heritage Conservation District. Will be, we will have a public information consultation on that at the Civic Center, here at the Civic Center, between three and five P M and and seven and nine P M. Both Ben and Sean will be present to do do a presentation and facilitate some discussion. And as well as interact with members of the community and listen to some of their comments on the on their work. In November, we do intend to reengage the Heritage Advisory Committee. As well as have a public meeting as well for the Heritage Conservation District. So that initiative itself needs a formal public meeting. So whereas the heritage strategy would would go through further consultation, but doesn't require heritage, doesn't require, sorry, a public of meeting. And then again, in January, December and January, reconvening with Committee of the whole council. And council itself as well to try to finally seize initiatives and make them a reality. And hopefully then they they point to some kind of action items that we have to jump on right away as staff. And I believe that's the end. Is there a next slide? That's it. Perfect. Thank you very much.
Really, really appreciate your flexibility, Mr. Kravnik. I know that I believe Mr. Good Eve did return to our meeting virtually. And I did think he also dialed in. So perhaps if members of committee have any questions that he and and Mr. Good Eve and Mr. Kravnik can tag team on those. So are there any questions? Actually, you know what? I need a motion first. So moved by Counselor Leahy. Thank you. So Counselor Leahy, please go ahead. And then I'll I will recognize Counselor Foster following.
Thank you very much through you, Madam Chair. I have a question regarding heritage tourism. As far as my understanding goes with the town currently and our strategic plan, tourism is a secondary tier in that plan. And I've brought up tourism before with regard to other opportunities and the Economic Development Department. So I'm wondering if our if our acting general manager could address the question of how heritage tourism would be combined with. A future plans of tourism within the town of East Goulambury.
Go ahead.
Certainly through you, Madam Chair. And and as I mentioned earlier, we we don't have the details of that yet that, but that these are some initiatives that require team input and team execution. So presently, we have, what we will know is that by the time, by twenty twenty seven, we will have a list of designated properties. Right now presently, we don't have a heritage planner on our staff. So we have to engage a heritage consultant to move that kind of work plan for designations forward in twenty twenty six. And how many we achieve designation for is kind of up to up to us to determine how fast and how many we can, how much money we're willing to spend and how fast we can get those done. Right now, we just have one consultant retained to do that work. Moving forward as well in terms of heritage tourism, I believe it does require a team effort such as communications or our library staff or are also our. Our E C Dev staff as well to see how we can kind of tap into some of those. Some of the, some of the existing designated properties and and how we can build upon the legacy that we have for built heritage in in E G. So unfortunately, Counselor Leahy, don't have the answer in terms of how we make that a reality. But we are, we are putting that on the table for, and I believe that's a medium term initiative, like in twenty twenty seven to twenty thirty one. So, you know, that is something that is on on the strategy right now. And as if it's on the strategy and it's passed by council. That means we have to start building a, in twenty twenty seven or twenty twenty eight, we have to start building a work plan around that strategy for execution.
Go ahead.
Thank you very much through you, Madam Chair. So if my understanding is correct, then we would need to look at the strategic plan. To with regard to tourism and consider if we chose to do so as a council to move a tourism from a second tier priority to a first tier priority. And work with the economic development. I'm just, I'm just hoping that we don't have to miss opportunities between now and twenty twenty seven to twenty thirty one. If we want to grow tourism and heritage tourism in East Goulambury in terms of a revenue source.
Yeah, and just a, Joe, just a point of clarification as well, Counselor, through you, Madam Chair. Yeah, and just a point of clarification as well, Counselor, through you, Madam Chair. They are not intended to be tiered strategies. So it's not to say that the green is more important or the yellow is less and the orange was a long-term outlook is even less important. That's not at all the case. The green is just simply identified as green because it can be addressed with the resources we have within the next calendar year, whereas the yellow items would require more financial resources, perhaps more staffing resources, and perhaps capital dollars. So that's why they are a yellow in terms of, perhaps not a tier, but a midterm proposal instead of a near-term proposal.
Thank you very much for that clarification and additional details. It's very helpful. So we have, we don't have currently a heritage planner as a position within the town of East Goulunbury, so we are using a heritage consultant. I have a question about something that you mentioned with regard to the volunteers who are on the heritage advisory committee and what their roles and responsibilities and duties are. And I have a question about, you said that you would be formalizing the process of providing special training for the heritage advisory committee, and I would like to know more about that. In light of the fact that they are volunteers and that we have expert staff and we have hired a heritage consultant whom we are paying, I would like to understand also as a counselor myself, with I am limited to within $500 of professional development or attending conferences in the current expense funds for counselors, how it is that volunteers are being invested in who may or may not continue to remain on council with taxpayer funds? Where is that money coming from? Thank you.
Mr. Krubnik?
Thank you, through you, Madam Chair. Thank you for your question, Counselor. Right now, it's presently anticipated that majority of that kind of, it's certainly not a robust, I'm not suggesting a robust kind of training program, and most of that would be through staff time. So it means that perhaps someone like myself or the staff liaison would outline, or perhaps on an annual basis would outline to the heritage advisor committee, what their kind of terms of references, what their role and function is, and just kind of as updates and perhaps as a reminder, and perhaps also let them know how staff can be a resource to them as well and how council functions, so how their role functions in, how their role functions and relates to council's role. So in terms of their advisory capacity to council. We do have the opportunity, if we do wish to engage someone like Mr. Holthoff, to come in and visit the heritage advisor committee and provide some feedback on properties, whether they're listed or designated. But the intent is really that that's going to be predominantly the time with the heritage advisor committees, predominantly staff time with heritage advisor committee.
And one final question through you, Madam Chair. Sometimes these issues are very complex and require questions. So I would like to make one observation before my last question. So my observation is that as a counselor, my job, as I understand it, is to listen to residents, listen to staff, listen to stakeholders before making decisions, and also listen to some of the advice that comes from an advisory committee. However, I do foresee on the horizon, there seems to be some confusion because I'm, we are sitting here as members of council, and it has happened on more than one occasion, that we are not following the recommendations of the expert staff when they come to us whom we are paying, or the consultants necessarily whom we are paying, but we are taking the advice of volunteer members of an advisory committee. So I would like that to be taken into consideration because as a counselor, I believe that I need to listen to the individuals who have degrees and experience with regard to the complex municipal acts and other areas that require a specialized knowledge. I don't think it's our job as a municipality to train volunteers to do a job. And that we're going to listen to their advice over the advice of expert staff who are paid employees of the municipality. So I have a serious concern in that regard. My second question is, I have received some emails from individuals who live within the Heritage Conservation District and who have questions about the heritage study. And so if they, I know that they have the opportunity on the 16th to get involved and to come out and to speak with our staff members about this, about these issues involved with the heritage staff.
Just to clarify, October 29th?
Sorry, October 29th. My apologies, it's another public information session. So October 29th is the date that individuals who have concerns about heritage in East Goulunbury can come out to these two presentations. So what other suggestions would you make to an individual who hypothetically lives within a proposed heritage conservation district or has questions about if they own a heritage property that might be put on a list? What do you suggest to them if they have concerns about being put on a heritage list?
Mr. Krubnik?
Through you, Madam Chair. Certainly those concerns could always be communicated to staff. We do make those concerns, we do also share them with, or we would share them with the HAC as well as if there's any kind of objections to designations, we would share them with council and the HAC. The hope as well is that, we are really going to be talking in 2027 about designated properties, not necessarily listed properties. Again, at the end of 2026 or at the beginning of 2027, we have to remove all of our listed properties and focus our time and energy and resourcing on what we want to designate as community. So that will be a little bit more of a, perhaps a public process where I would make council aware of what we, how we can move a strategy forward through designating certain properties. So I certainly want to keep the HAC and council aware and apprised of what the recommendations are from staff to move forward in terms of designating. So through that, we would also be in contact with those owners as well. The hope is that, and the aim, I think, is to really seek their approval for designation rather than having to contest a designation.
Thank you very much. So just one final detail that came to my mind as I was...
Counselor Leahy, I will remind you that there are two other people who are waiting to speak, and you've already asked three questions.
Okay, I'll save my last question.
Okay, thank you. So Counselor Foster, if you'd like to go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So dealing with Mr. Goodev through this process has been fabulous so far. He's been able to kind of jump in midstream and move this forward. It's very satisfying to me to look at reports that talk about fact sheets of benefits of designation and the designation process. These are all things that our volunteer group of the HAC had been working on for years and never been able to really push forward. So that group has been on the right track. And I also should say that I believe there's a list of 11 or 12 properties sitting, waiting to move through the process of designation. That process, as the HAC has kind of been told to not get in a big hurry about that quite yet, although we've only got a year left as far as I'm concerned, but that all kind of fits nicely with our built heritage strategy and the HAC as it works forward. So hopefully that all works together. One of the things that I would like to see, and again, I often say I like to have things made drop-dead simple for me, that's what I operate best in, is drop-dead simple. This date of January 1st, 2027, when the heritage is under a big cloud to do with the provincial government, some of the simple questions that I would like to have answered, and I'm not sure that I've gotten those answers yet, and maybe Mr. Goodev, if he's with us, can help me out, or maybe this is something that we need to put in a report, but... So we lose our heritage list on January 1, 2027. Does that mean we cannot move forward with any designation because we don't have a heritage list? We still have properties that fit the requirements for designation. So can that actually move forward? And then the second part of that is, in these reports, we talk about how previous consultants have mentioned that the Village of Mount Albert needs to be looked at for an HCD. I think there's a glaring omission there when they talk about Mount Albert and Holland Landing, and it doesn't say anything about Queensville. The Leslie Street stretch of Queensville, I think, is probably under more risk of development pressures than Mount Albert for sure, and maybe even the main street of Holland Landing. So can HCDs be explored after January 1, 2027, or are they held in kind of a moratorium for that five-year period?
Mr. Krubnik or Mr. Goodev, would you?
Thank you through you, Madam Chair. I could let Mr. Goodev contribute to this as well. Yes, absolutely, Counselor Foster, that we have to move on these designations quickly. If we weren't going through this heritage strategy process, you know, I would have probably jumped on just designation process immediately because that's first and foremost kind of concern. But we are on the tail end of this strategy process, so I think it does behoove us to kind of wait a couple of months to see it through so that that direction's provided and the clarity's provided on direction to staff. That being said as well, we can, and the intent is, I believe there was a recommendation in the strategy for an examination of an HCD within Mount Albert, and certainly welcome your thoughts and recommendations about Queensville as well. So that's the kind of feedback we are certainly looking for because that speaks to us needing to or not revise our heritage, our draft heritage strategy. So that can be something that we look at, and that is, my understanding is that's something we can continue to look at following January 1st, 2027, is HCDs. That is in fact a good place to potentially, you know, turn some of our attention and our efforts and our resources towards. Because when something is, our heritage register won't go away fully because we still have designated properties. Those stay designated. But once they're delisted, we have to wait five years before coming back to list and designate those properties.
So to clarify, because I want to make sure that this is clear, as of January 1, 2027, we as a community will be able to undertake heritage conservation districts, but we will need to wait five years in order to designate a property. And I think some of us are thinking about things that aren't listed, that we don't know about, that may emerge. I don't know, surprise, a log cabin on the side of a creek. What are the tools going to be available to us as of January 1, 2027? Do we know?
Through you, Madam Chair, certainly, yes, we are, legislation severely kind of hampers us in those efforts. So they, and they will be, there will be more negotiation as well in terms of with the development community, in terms of preserving things that we know are desirable to continue to preserve. And those discussions will still be had. I still anticipate having those discussions through our, you know, whether it's through our subdivision process or our official plan amendment process or a zoning bylaw amendment process. So we can still, and a person can still, to my understanding, move forward with a voluntary designation process.
Okay. Counselor Foster, did that answer your question?
It does, but it also leads me to another question. So something that I tried to, that I talked about greatly from before our first drop-dead date, which was January 1, 2025, I believe, and then we got the two-year extension, or everyone did. I tried to talk about starting a campaign to get that extension. Is that worthwhile trying to do again? I know that there are other municipalities out there struggling the same as we are, maybe worse off than we are. Is there an opportunity for us to put something together that kind of gets that ball rolling that, you know, here we are down to a year again, basically? And I don't know that we're a heck of a lot better off than we were before January 1 of this year. So is that something we should consider?
Through you, Madam Chair. Certainly, I think reaching out to other levels of government, just like our own municipal level of government, is something that's a benefit to our council or a benefit to our community. So I don't see why council or our members of community can still advocate for that, for our provincial government to extend that deadline. It's still something that can obviously happen. They may choose to do so next year as well as they come closer to that date. But right now, that's, you know, we're working with a date, with a known date. So but certainly, if there is something that council wants to put forward, it can also be passed along to the, sorry, to the correct ministry for that kind of communication.
Thank you, Mr. Krubnik. Counselor Carruthers, please go ahead.
Thank you. I appreciate the use of the word built heritage in the slide presentation and the memo because I've spoken before about we need to, we have a lot of heritage here and only some of it is built. However, the appendix, we've gone back to saying municipal heritage strategy. We've dropped the term built in that opening paragraph as well. So I just want to make a note to add that back in. I'd also, in our interviews with Mr. Goodev, spoke about having the opening paragraph of the strategy talk about those other forms of heritage resources that exist within our town. So while this is just speaking to basically houses, there is things like the Anchor and Anchor Park, there's the Upper and Lower Landing, there's the Lox and the Ghost Canal and Soldier's Bay and possibly indigenous sites. So I think that we should make some reference to that so that it's not, doesn't seem that we are overlooking it. And I would love at some point to come back and look at how we protect those important heritage resources as well. So just that comment, but then I, the, I'm surprised this hasn't been raised yet, and I'm surprised we didn't even have a deputation on it, but we have this heritage strategy and I want, I would like to understand if this was in place, how the log cabin on Sand Road would have played out? Would it still have been missed? Are we, there is something that needs to be corrected so that we don't have things like a historic log cabin slated for demolition? Does this strategy, and where in this strategy would it help us to protect things like that?
Mr. Krubnik?
Through you, Madam Chair. Thank you. And for the question around the log cabin, Counselor Carruthers, certainly every work that, you know, the municipality engages and moves forward with is kind of a best effort. And, you know, we rely on our own resources, our own knowledge, our consultant knowledge to bring something forward. In this case, you know, even having a heritage strategy in place, I don't think would have prevented what, or the, would have kind of changed the kind of result of having 31, the heritage property at, sorry, I should say proposed heritage or possible heritage resource at 31 Sand being identified. There are cases, and that's one of them, I think, where it really relies on the landowner and those in the community who are aware of the resource to bring that forward and make people aware of it, make your local council aware of it, make your staff aware of it, make, you know, so that that can be moved forward. Otherwise, if that's not something that's easily identifiable, and clearly it hasn't been for decades because none of our past heritage registers have identified that property within the registers themselves or within any study as well. So it certainly is a community effort to do this right and get everything we can on the table.
Thank you, and I appreciate all the work that staff have put in over really decades getting that list right. And I know it's a very long list, so the fact that this wasn't on it was very unfortunate. And I'm wondering as part of our strategy though, if we can do one more call out to the community that if you know of something in existence, you know, if you can let staff know or let your local council know, or if we can have something that's on the website where they can sign up and let people know what might be there. It's unfortunate that this was missed, and it's unfortunate the buildings around it were in such a state of disrepair that they were falling down. And I think that's something that Councilor Edie Clemente has called demolition by neglect. And we see that over and over again with heritage properties where they're left to rot and they lose all their heritage value because they're in such a rot, and they lose all their heritage value because they're in such a state of disrepair. So I'm wondering how this strategy might help address that.
Mr. Krubnik.
And through you, Madam Chair, certainly, some of the strategies as well, council rely on, you know, outreach for, to the residents. So we will, we will go on kind of somewhat of, maybe create campaigns as well to reach out to residents as well, including first nations, to see what kind of archival information is out there, what kind of resources are out there, what kind of material we can to create, to help kind of build a repository within the, the community itself. And where that repository is held? Is it just, you know, digital and online, or is it within some kind of physical location? So those are things that we don't know yet, but there are strategies within the built heritage strategy that we are proposing that are broader and go a little bit beyond just the built heritage.
Wonderful, thank you so much.
Thank you. And, and I, I do imagine that staff have noted that the, the request or the feedback for the amendments to be made in the appendix, as well as the preamble documents, as far as reflecting other, other forms of heritage. Okay, thank you. Counselor Leahy, you, you had a question earlier, and now that others have had an opportunity, I'll open the floor back to you. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. And that's a good segue, because it involves the demolition of heritage buildings, or any building for that matter. What is the town policy with regard to issuing a demolition permit? And do, does staff send out a, an individual to inspect a property before a demolition permit is issued?
Mr. Krubnik.
Thank you. And through you, Madam Chair, and certainly, you know, I think the most qualified person to speak to this would be our chief building official. That being said, you know, I can communicate what I do know, and, and there's a, it's a multifold answer here, because one is relies on legislation, and the other relies on also resourcing. So legislation does not require a municipality to, to do a site visit prior to demolition being issued on a property. Another is that, you know, municipalities, ours and others, do not have the resourcing to, to be able to meet the legislative requirements of, I believe, a 10-day turnaround review on a building permit, to go out there and, and do that within the stipulated time period. So, you know, municipalities neither have the resourcing, and neither are required to do so when issuing a building, a demolition permit. We do, for demolition permits as well, rely on our heritage register, which is, you know, why it's an important resource for us, in terms of having everything on that heritage register that we can have on there. So we rely on it for our, our ability to say, hey, in fact, there is something that is listed on this property. And, and we rely on the, not only it being up to date, but the fact that it's captured, you know, the bulk of the heritage resources in our community, because it's been, we've had these heritage registers in one form or another for, for many, many years. And so we rely on it to kind of be able to put a flag towards, raise a flag if there's something kind of concerning on the property. So, and if there has been none, because in this case, perhaps there has been no study that's identified it, or no community member who's identified it and brought it to our attention, and it didn't make it to a register, there will be a building demolition permit that is issued.
Thank you very much for that clarification. And I'm, I'm just curious if, if it's possible, my fellow colleague, Counselor Terry Foster, during a previous meeting, brought a copy of a, a photocopied book with some of the history of the area in it. And I'm wondering if it's possible for staff to be given a photocopy of it, or if other copies are, are able to be tracked down, so that all, all members of the, the planning department, members of council, perhaps there's an opportunity to have a copy of it in the library for residents to access and to, and to read? If that might be a suggestion that we incorporate what resources we do have in terms of materials and books in, in one central location of the municipality, so that staff members can use it as a resource as well in the future?
Thank you. I think that's part of the, the strategy here, is ensuring that is happening. And I know you've already done some work, Counselor Foster, on this.
Yeah, specifically on that, I have been working with the library, and I've been working with our heritage liaison here on staff. No other copies of that book have been found to date, which I find very surprising. I, I'm positive there are some around, we're just not finding them for some reason or Ms. Sador has offered to make sure that there is a copy at the library, and we will work to get that done. And maybe we get a couple done, so there's more here for staff also. But yeah, that, that book is there, and it's available.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Counselor Foster. So seeing no further, other, further questions, I have a motion as presented from Counselor Leahy. All those in favor? And we've got that motion passed. Thank you very much, everyone. That brings us to the end of our prepared agenda. Mr. Krubnik, did you have anything further that you wish to raise at this time?
Nothing further, thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Krubnik, and I appreciate your flexibility in, in pinch hitting, pun intended, for, for Mr. Goodeve. I'll turn the chair back to you, Mr. Acting Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor, and we are passing the baton again over to Counselor Carruthers for Corporate Services.
Thank you very much. We have one item under Corporate Service today, and that is a report on opposition to the Protect Ontario by Unleashing Our Economy Act 2025. And this stemmed from a deputation we had from a resident, and we asked staff to report back on it. I'm going to turn this over to Ms. Gandhi to take us through it. Thank you.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. So yes, on September 10th, there was a deputation that was presented to us, and, and then staff were directed to report back to council on the Protect Ontario by Unleashing Our Economy Act 2025. Staff have now completed that review and have presented findings by way of this memo and a, and a proposed motion. I'll also note that a number of other municipalities have taken similar action, and I will note that the Association of Municipalities of Ontario has, has led that, that way. So without any, if there are any questions, I'm, I welcome them. Chris Ross is also online, and she can answer some of the more technical questions, if there are any. Thank you.
Thank you. So we're in good company with AMO and, and other municipalities. That's good to hear. And thank you, Ms. Ross, for putting this together and really putting a EG spin on it. So we're not just cutting and pasting from others' resolutions, but actually speaking specifically of the priorities that are here. Can I have someone move the resolution as in the agenda? Counselor Foster, thank you. As the mover, would you like to speak first? Okay, Counselor Leahy.
Thank you very much, Counselor Carruthers. So I had a couple of observations and a couple of questions. I was interested in learning more about the process that staff went through to come, settle on this seven-page resolution. And one part of it, on page two of the seven-page resolution, it says that in preparation for this staff report, there was a consultant who was spoken with. And I, I am curious as to whether that consultant was paid or unpaid for providing the consultation services.
Ms. Gandhi?
Through you, Madam Chair. We wanted to make sure that whatever we were putting in front of council had some weight to it, and so yes, of course, we would seek external consultation with this or any other matter that we bring before council, to make sure that we have accurate information, and of course, that individual would be paid.
Thank you, I appreciate that. And just a quick correction, that the report may be seven pages, but the resolution is just the appendix at the end. That's just a page and a half. Continue.
Thank you very much, through you, Madam Chair. So I also would like to verify if it's the same David Donnelly as, who was the executive director of the Environmental Defense. That was his job, and if I, because it's not, if it is, his name is spelled incorrectly in the report. I believe there are two N's, not one N. So I just wanted to verify the identity of the individual who was consulted, and I would like to ask if there were any other individuals consulted to provide a balanced viewpoint, and whether or not the Ministry of the Environment and Conservation and Parks was consulted, or any of the concerns or questions of East Goulamberry's staff and council were addressed with the Ministry before proceeding with this report.
Ms. Gandhi?
Yes, through you, Madam Chair. I will start with saying that we have staff members who have expertise in this area. So Chris Ross was hired, who does have a background in a number of environmentally-related matters. And so, and I will ask that Chris respond if there's any additional people in addition to Mr. Donnelly, who was consulted.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon. So, Counselor, through you, Madam Chair, answering the question. No, I did research online with different municipalities, different documents that has been, have been approved in the region and in the, in the province. I made a comparison of those documents, and then I ran a research directly with the act on all, I think it was 79 pages, comparing what I found with what is in the report. Then I wrote a table with all the possible impacts that I found, and that was sent to the lawyer for clarification. Out of the 11 impacts that I found, they agreed, or they corroborated six of them. And the most important or impactful twist, willing bully, were added in the report, and then were laid out in the resolution.
Thank you very much for that. I'll just see if anyone else has a question, and we'll come back to you. Counselor Roy DeClemente, any questions?
Not at this time, thank you.
Thank you. You may continue.
Thank you very much. So I would like clarification from our CAO and our clerk, in terms of the process of hiring external legal counsel to contribute to staff and council making decisions. Because it's my understanding that through other discussions that we've had, whether it's enclosed session or open session, that it's through council's direction that we, we give, we give direction to our, our department, our, our town solicitor, whether or not we need to hire external legal advice. And so I don't recall voting on hiring external legal advice.
I'm, I'm going to just go to Counselor Roy DeClemente, and then I'll turn it over to CAO.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm, I'm just confused, because I thought we were discussing the draft motion for our consideration and not an operational matter about how staff conduct their business within their approved budgets and business plans.
Thank you. I think I can rule on that, and I think you're right. I think the question's out of order, and it's something that you can follow up directly with staff after the meeting. And let's keep it to the resolution before us.
A point of order, excuse me, a point of order, is my understanding that we have, we have staff, clerks, our CAO, and others. Point of order is that it's not your job to decide and rule on a matter. So I would like my question answered with our CAO and our, and our town solicitor, what the process is that we have followed in terms of council directing staff to hire external legal counsel.
Okay, so it actually is my job, because I am chairing this meeting, and you're, you're, I have ruled that you are out of order. The question is out of order, that you may follow up with staff outside of the meeting. Right now, the item on, before us, is the motion that is before us. And according to our procedural bylaw, we need to speak to the motion that is before us. So this is the motion that's before us. We have a mover.
Part of the motion before us, through you, Madam Chair, is that we read what has been put forward to us in a resolution, what the process entailed of. Here is what I know. I know that East Goulamberry is not a special designated zone.
Counselor Leahy, I've already made a ruling. You may challenge the chair if you would like, but the ruling has been made.
I would like to challenge the chair.
Okay, so a motion has been made to challenge the chair. All those in favor of, of challenging the chair? And that fails, because that was only two out of five. Okay, so the ruling stands, and we are going to now vote on the resolution before us, if there is no more comments.
A point of order, I would like to understand from the clerk when my question will be answered, and if we need to ask our town solicitor or a CAO to answer the question with regard to the process. Here is what I know. East Goulamberry is not a special designated zone. East Goulamberry does not sit on critical minerals for the environment. And whenever we're voting on something, I was not made aware that we were hiring an external consultant, and we did not give direction to staff to hire an external consultant to contribute to this report. So I am asking a procedural question, which is, I am entitled to ask the procedural question as to when we hire external consultants, whether we are allowed to...
Counselor Leahy, your point of order has been ruled on. You've challenged the chair. That's been voted on. We are now moving on to vote on the resolution that's before us. And you are more than free to ask staff questions outside of the meeting, to ask your, to get the answers that you require. So if there's no further questions, we haven't heard from Counselor Johns. Counselor Johns, did you have anything to add? Thank you. So with the resolution bef, oh, Counselor Roy DeClemente, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I did want to speak to the draft motion. My, as I had spoken about it earlier, when we first were, were asking staff to prepare this, I was concerned, because I felt that it was, it was important for us to balance the needs of economic growth, not just for the town of East Goulamberry, but for the province as a whole. My, my support for this resolution is simply from that of somebody who respects the work that our staff has done, and who also respects the, the concerns that our residents have raised with us, that relate to the legislation's impact on our municipality's ability to protect and preserve the environment, which is one of our stated strategic goals. So that is why I am supporting this resolution. I still am supportive of the province's efforts to improve our ability to extract critical minerals, to unlock our economic potential, and to find ways to grow our economy. As I had said before, the legislation has had unintended consequences at a more granular level, and I wanted a resolution that would address that. And I think that staff have done that for us.
Very well said. Thank you very much. Counselor Leahy.
So through you, Madam Chair, I would like to know what these unintended consequences are for East Goulamberry, that my fellow counselor just referred to. Because you can't have your cake and eat it too. Either you're supportive of the province's desire to find ways to protect and grow our, our economy through the development of the Ring of Fire, and we do not occupy any critical mineral mines, and we do not, we are not designated a special economic zone. So I would like to understand the examples of how, what unintended consequences have befallen East Goulamberry with, with Bill 5. In order, so that I can, I can hear both sides of this argument before I decide on it.
So it's right there in the, it's right there in the report. It's in the resolution. That serious concerns, it interferes with local planning, limits public consultation, is inconsistent with the principles of free, prior, and informed consent and consultation with processes of indigenous communities, and weakens protection to heritage and species. And so it's right there in, in the motion, and there's further detail within the report. So I think that we have, have addressed this.
One more question, through you, Madam Chair. You didn't allow my, I addressed my question to my fellow counselor to answer.
I move that we call the question.
Okay, the question has been called. Everyone has had an opportunity to speak. All those in favor? All those opposed? And that carries. Thank you. With nothing else on the agenda for Corporate Services, I'll turn it back to Counselor Johns.
So that moves us forward into item I. This is in regards to finance, and so the Finance Report 2025-006, Council Discretionary Expense Policy. Mr. Marshall, would you like to set this up for us?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. So this report is in response to council's request to table a draft discretionary expense policy for committee and council consideration. policy for committee and council consideration. The policy was drafted using the key concepts that were tabled with council previously. And the key concepts were developed based on a review of council expense policies amongst other municipalities who had an expense policy. So the one thing I'd like to note is that the recommendation doesn't have an effective date. So if council decides to pass this, this policy, I would suggest that it would be appropriate to start the policy effective January 1 to coincide with the new year and start of the 2026 budget. So happy to answer any questions.
Great, thanks. Okay, so first we need to table this to start the discussion on it. So who would like to move the, okay, Counselor Lahey, you're moving the, the motion as documented in the report. Who would like to, sorry, call, sorry. So Counselor Lahey's moved it. Who would like to speak to it? Anybody wish to speak to it? Counselor Lahey, thank you.
Thank you very much, through you, Acting Mayor Johns. So I, I'd like to know more information about best practices in the other municipalities. Because in my conversations with neighboring municipalities, with their mayors, with their fellow counselors, I, I've been asking the question since the expense fund for individual counselors in East Goulunbury was reduced to $500 for communicating with their residents. And, and I, and I broached the topic of expense funds with multiple people in other municipalities. And they were all, without exception, confused about the $500 limit on the counselor, an individual counselor's expense funds for communication. They acknowledged that it was almost impossible to do your job properly. And they told me about their various systems of counselor expense funds, which varied from $8,000 per individual counselor to, and with no categories involved, to just one big pot and of, of funds and that counselors would, would apply to that fund to spend it. Because what that reflects is, is it reflects the individual basis by which counselors choose to do their job. Some choose to go to conferences to have a voice at the table, to advocate for their municipality. Others do not. Some choose to send out a newsletter, others do not. And what the restriction that has, perhaps the intentions were good in the last budget when the individual counselor expense funds were reduced. But what it created was an uneven playing field, which the integrity commissioner has commented on, both in writing and verbally, that it is not inclusive, it is an uneven, not unfair playing field, that only those in, in, who are, have deep pockets can then outspend other counselors who stay within that $500 limit to do their job. So I would like to respectfully say that I do not agree with this. I find, could you tell us, please, when I was looking through, Mr. Marshall, I was reading through this report, what changed from the situation of previously not having any policy around counselors' expense funds and they spent their funds as to their own discretion, which is what other municipalities do? So I don't see how you can present this and say that this is what other municipalities are doing, when I know for a fact this is not the same process that, or the same, the same funding process that, that the other municipalities are dealing with. So.
So through you, Mr. Chair. I think what you are referring to is the, the dollars associated with your spending requests. This, this policy is the framework regarding how you spend your discretionary funds. The actual dollar value is, is debated and decided on during the budget process, which is outside of this policy. This policy is the guidelines and framework. Previously, there wasn't a written policy that provided that guideline. Council asked for a written guideline and, and framework. That's what is provided here. The dollar values, your, your concern about the $500 limit, that would be addressed during the budget discussions where the resources regarding how you do your job is debated and decided on.
So if my understanding is correct, if I may confirm through you, Acting Mayor Johns, that basically you are just putting in writing what has always been the case, which is that individual counselors use their discretion for spending their expense funds, correct?
Through you, Mr. Chair. This provides a bit more guidance regarding how counselors spend their funding. But before council had asked for some guidelines in a written policy, that's what's been provided here.
Thank you, Mr. Marshall. Counselor Carruthers.
Thank you, and thank you for putting this together. I have just a couple of comments. The initial policy statement around accountability, I understand where you're trying to get with the ultimate accountability is our constituents, of course. But I do feel that as a council, we share some accountability on, on how we, we spend public dollars. So I'm not really sure I agree entirely with that line. So if we're looking at January 1, perhaps we can look a little bit of fine tuning and, and bring this back. A couple of other things around central support. I would love that to also talk about how the town provides communications townwide. There is a council budget line, I think it's, I know we're not talking about dollars now, but just so you know what I'm talking about, I think there's like an $8,000 line in there for community engagement. So that's a centralized support as well. And just making sure that we, we document all of that. So it's very clear that the town is stepping up in many ways for centralized support in communications. And I have one other comment under council members' responsibilities. The last line, I don't quite understand. It says, ensure all financial, legal, and income tax obligations are met. So if I don't pay my income tax, I'm going to get in trouble under the discretionary expense policy? To me, it just doesn't quite make sense, but I'm sure you can make it make sense for me.
Through you, Mr. Chair. It, no, it's not to make sure that you file your income tax. It's, there are some expenses that could have some taxable benefit implications and we want to make sure that those are captured when you're doing your taxes.
Wonderful. Okay, and I understand that now. I'm disappointed that this doesn't have more teeth, that it, it sort of relies on the mayor's office to review, but if someone went and spent money that didn't fall under this policy, it sounds like the only teeth is waiting till the next election and if residents find out and choose to not elect. So I would love to see what other municipalities do as far as putting some sort of teeth in this to ensure that we're following it. I think one of the biggest things in this is reimbursing for overages. If you overspend your budget, you're now required to reimburse the town for that. And I think that's a good and responsible thing for us to do. So I appreciate that aspect of the policy. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Carruthers. Just before you, Counselor Lahey, Counselor Roy DeClemente, did I see you look to want to speak? No? Okay, Counselor Lahey, go ahead.
Thank you very much, through you, Acting Mayor Johns. So I have two follow-up points in order to set the record straight in terms of accuracy of information that's being shared with the public. I have asked in the past, during the last budget process, with regard to doing a digital newsletter, which is put out by other municipalities, by staff on behalf of all of the counselors, and that is centralized support. But I was told that there is no centralized support for any kind of digital newsletter at the town of East Goulunbury because there are not enough staff to support us that way. So we do indeed need to have the ability to communicate with our residents through newsletters. We communicate through our residents in many different ways. Not everybody's on social media. Some people still like to get a postcard in the, in the mail. And, and so that is not correct that we're receiving that centralized support with regard to newsletters. The other point I would like to bring up, and I have a question about, is with regard to honorariums that a counselor may or may not receive for attending meetings on behalf of the municipality of East Goulunbury. So in the case where there is a counselor who represents East Goulunbury and, and sits in, in place of the mayor on a board, if that counselor receives honorariums, what is the process by which that is documented so that the public is aware that they are receiving additional money to, towards a salary for representing East Goulunbury?
Just before we refer that question to staff, I would just want to say, in my time as, serving as acting mayor and the time that I served on regional council, at no point did I, have I ever received an honorarium.
Through you, Acting Mayor Johns, I was not referring to you. I was referring to another separate entity, that there is a representative on, on council who's a council member who also serves on that particular authority and may or may not be receiving honorariums. So I'm wondering about if they, if there is an honorarium being received by anyone. And I, I appreciate the fact that whenever we serve as an acting mayor role, we don't get compensated for that. That's part of the job, serving as an acting mayor.
And really, and I was just simply clarifying for the, the public watching that, with that being brought up, in my role that I have serving now and what I served before, I have never received an honorarium.
Yes, and I understand. So I would like, no, I would like my question answered first before we move on to other council questions.
Sorry, that's why I was pointing to Mr. Marshall.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, yeah. This is on topic. This is regarding when, when someone represents us as a council member. So this is my question for Mr. Marshall in terms of recording honorariums. Thank you.
So through you, Mr. Chair. I'm not aware of a council member right now receiving an honorarium. If there are honorariums, the responsible area that is providing that honorarium should be reporting that to us so we can report that out.
Great, thank you. Okay, if, are there any further questions about, yeah, Counselor Roy DeClemente?
Just a point of clarification regarding e-newsletters. We have something called the EGE news that, as I understand it, is available for all residents of East Goulunbury and we put significant resources into preparing that. Is that not true, Mr. Chair? Through you to staff.
Through, through you, I, sorry, I'm losing track of who's chairing this. Through you, Mr. Chair. Yes, we do have the EGE news, which is produced on a weekly basis and we send it to residents through an automated system that we have. We also produce ads that go into the EG Bulletin and that is produced and distributed across, across the municipality. So there are other ways that we disseminate information that speak to initiatives, active activities, and events that the town is hosting.
Thank you. And then further, Mr. Chair, I believe the counselor may be alluding in some way to my role at the LS RCA board. There is, for members of the LS RCA, there is a $100 honoraria that is offered to members of the board. However, in my role at the LS RCA on the board, I'm appointed by York Region and I represent York Region and not the town of East Goulunbury.
So based on the discussions around the table, as it pertains to the resolution of council discretionary expense policy, there's a mover to this. But the discussion that was related specifically to the motion, what I actually heard was, is that there was a desire to refer it back to staff on some of the, to counselors' comments. Am I, am I clear in understanding that that was a desire through that discussion? Counselor Carruthers and then Counselor Lahey.
I, I was thinking that, but then I, I also think about staff time and the amount of time that we debate ourselves does not help the residents. So, and, and I would like us to move on to business that, that affects the residents more than our discretionary expense policy. So I, I would like to see the centralized support paragraph beefed up a little bit with all the ways we provide centralized support. It's not individual support, it's centralized support, how we're communicating behalf of the town. But I don't want that so badly that I want to go through this discussion again. So I, so I think I'm going to call the question. Yeah.
Prior to calling the question, so go ahead and then we will, we will call the question.
Thank you very much, through you, Acting Mayor Johns. So the only problem with saying that we have the, the EG news newsletter and the EG Bulletin, yes, we are paying the EG Bulletin to the two full inner pages for that, but when there's a Canada Post strike, as there is now, it is undeliverable. So this is not the first time that it's happened, it's the second time that it's happened. And I would like to suggest that each of us as counselors decides how much time, how much effort, the way in which we want to express ourselves, the way in which we want to communicate with our residents. And while some, maybe they've been at the job longer, they have other ways of communicating with their residents, I choose to communicate with my residents in a whole manner of, of ways. And I don't believe that the democratic process of being an elected official, that I should be handcuffed by a, an absurdly low amount and with regard to what services are being offered that I can afford to do my job as I see fit. So I will be voting against this because I don't believe that it's, it hasn't had sufficient input yet from perhaps all of the, all of the counselors in terms of what we're trying to get at. And what we're trying to get at is counselors spending their expense funds in an accountable and transparent manner, and that's what everybody's goal, I assume, is. So we'll talk about the limits and the amounts during the budget process, but unless the town staff are going to be able to provide some other sort of centralized communications, I, I wouldn't be, I wouldn't be voting in favor of this policy.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Lahey. So the, the question has been called. All those in favor? Motion carries. Thank you. So that takes us to engineering and public works. And Counselor Lahey, it is back to you in the chair for the item that's, and sitting under item J.
Thank you very much, through you, Acting Mayor Johns. So we are at section J, engineering and public works, with regard to a report, waste management update, the blue box transition, which is coming in the new year. So I will, General Manager Molinari is absent with notice today, if we're going to go along with the, with the way we talk about counselors. But we have the very fine Mr. Jeff Megget, who is going to provide us with that report. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam, excuse me, thank you, Madam Chair. I'm happy to introduce and discuss this report with you that provides an update on several key waste management initiatives. The first is the transition of the town's blue box program. East Goulunbury will transition to the new provincial recycling system led by circular materials at the end of this year. Key changes include replacement of blue boxes with a 360-liter wheeled tote, biweekly recycling collection, and an expanded list of accepted recyclable materials such as toothpaste tubes, jodhpur containers, and coffee cups. What can be recycled in the new year will be consistent province-wide. To improve the collection of efficiency of large items such as furniture and mattresses, staff proposed introducing collection tags and requiring scheduled pickup through GFL. This aligns with best practices and minimizes unnecessary truck routing, and it's the second major update that's, that's coming as part of this contract. Finally, in partnership with the N6, we're continuing preparations for the next waste management contract. Public information sessions have been held and resident survey continues to be open until October 17. Feedback will help shape collection methods for 2028 and beyond. I'm quite happy to report that so far we've had more than 300 surveys submitted from East Goulunbury residents, and a report summarizing public input and the RFP outcome will come to council early next year for consideration on next steps. This truly is a pivotal moment in modernizing waste services and aligning with the province's goals of a circular economy. So with that, I welcome any questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Megget. And can I have a mover for this report, please? Acting Mayor Johns, thank you. And are there any questions for Mr. Megget about the new recycling program? Yes, Acting Mayor Johns?
Thanks, Counselor Lahey. Through you to Mr. Megget, and thank you for your and your team's efforts on the public information sessions that you did. They were very engaging. The fact that you had the tote there so that we could see. The fact that you had the tote there so that we could see that was, was very effective in communicating what is coming up next on January 1st. I noticed in the motion that I did just move, that council requests Circular Materials provide a smaller tote option to the 360-liter tote to maximize public acceptance and participation in their program. Is, is this something that we also have the N6 championing as well? If you could speak to that, that would be appreciated. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. Yeah, that is something the N6 is very passionate about right now. It's providing options to residents, providing options for a smaller container due to special circumstances, space limitations, et cetera. And also make available a second container, a large one. A large family may require more than one collection every two weeks. But we do recognize there are unique circumstances out there. And we are hopeful that Circular Materials will be accommodating. But the motion to have council support this more firmly is never a bad thing, so we support that.
Councilor Cruthers.
Thank you. And thank you for hearing us when, when we did suggest that about the smaller tote. So we're questioning it of Circular Materials because they're the ultimate people who are doing this. But I'm wondering if a copy of that should be sent, I don't know, to the province, to the other N6. I just think getting the word out that this is what council is asking, East Goulunberry council is asking, maybe get it a little bit broader. So, sorry, the mover was Councilor Johns. So I would like to, friendly amendment, that we, a copy of this resolution be forwarded to the N6. And who else would you suggest, Mr. Megget?
Through Madam Chair, I think it's fully appropriate to also contact the MECP from the, and from the province to make that aware to them as well.
Thank you very much.
Are there any other questions with regard to, yes, Councilor Roy DiClemente?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you to Mr. Megget. I, I know you have done an exceptional job in communicating all of these changes and advocating on behalf of our community. My questions are a little bit more operational in question, in matter. And that is understanding when the distribution of these totes is going to take place, because I anticipate when they show up, there's going to be an influx of calls to customer care. And then secondly, what will happen to our existing blue bins? Is there going to be some sort of initiative to collect all of those blue bins that are out there? And I'll start there, if I, if I may.
Thank you so much. Yes, this transition is happening at a very difficult time, for sure. Any transition over holiday season is a challenge. Benefit is residents will have a very large container to put out the myriad of recycling they'll create over the holidays. So we, we look forward to picking them up. The, the collection of the totes when they're, when they're released to residents, when they're delivered, everyone will receive it. That receipt has a Blue Box collection today. There's information contained in it that says, please don't use it till the new year. That's when the program's going to start. We are actively having discussions with both GFL, the contractor of pickup recycling, and Circular Materials, to offset recycling from garbage day. So it'll be green bin every single week, like it is now, garbage one week, and recycling the next week, to try and help take some of that onus off collection and having a whole pile of material at the curb.
So just further to that, so we're, we're working, we're trying to get GFL to collect our existing blue bins. And, and for those residents who have purchased additional ones, how might we address the fact that in some households, they're putting out five blue bins every week, if they're a large household? Are they going to get two, are they going to put out all of their blue bins and then get two totes? How, how will that work?
Thank you, but thank you for that. Recycling's, the recycling of the boxes is a bit of a challenge right now. Officially, Circular Materials has informed us that they're going to strongly encourage the reuse of existing containers for other purposes in the household. We are absolutely hoping that that is the case. But if a resident has a broken container or something they don't want anymore, that there is an option to recycle those containers. So it's, it's a very fluid decision right now. And we're actively discussing that with Circular Materials. And I think there will be a good outcome. We are currently recycling broken blue boxes when we get them back. We expect Circular Materials will follow suit and offer the same thing. If it's put in the, in the recycling container for recycling, when it gets to their facility, there's no reason they can't pull it aside and recycle it. So we are actively encouraging that. And hopefully, hopefully that will happen. With your second question about a second container, right now, everyone for sure is going to get one container. But we are hoping that there's going to be some understanding from Circular Materials for not only an alternate-sized container if the need arises, or a second container for those high generations. Because ultimately, they do want all the recycled material placed inside that cart.
Just as a follow-up, Madam Chair, the, the existing blue bins that are out there, I'm, I'm not, I'm not aware of, maybe they can give, part of the communication can be what you can use your blue bins for. Because quite frankly, it's a storage issue as it is. If you're going to ask residents to find a, a spot for their tote, and now they've got three or four blue bins that they don't need anymore, that might be, and they might be broken or cracked, that might be a challenge. I, I would strongly encourage us to have a, some kind of a mechanism for, for collecting those blue bins that people do not wish to have anymore. Thank you.
Are there any other questions from council members? Seeing none, I have a question. I would like to ask Mr. Megget about the financial savings, if there are any, with regard to this. The province is taking over the blue bin program. And then in February of next year, the council will be discussing further the gray bins for garbage, et cetera, and, and the cost of those. And so what would be, are there any cost savings? Or what would there be in terms of further expenses in the future that you are anticipating?
Through Madam Chair. Absolutely, collection costs, when we look at marketplace, is getting expensive. We highly expect collection in the future to increase. It's a general market trend. And we're working with our finance team to make sure we're prepared for, for that ultimate adjustment in pricing, if you will, when that comes. One of the reasons we're going through an RFP process with the Northern Six is to come back to you with options. It's come back, say, this, although contractors may want us to use a tote for health and safety and issues and for contract management, we want to come back and say, this is what the actual cost is going to be. This is what the public feedback has been, and empower you to make the, the decision you think is right for the community. We do expect costs will increase, and we'll be coming back with ways to try and mitigate that cost input.
Thank you very much. So are there, if seeing no other questions, we will vote on this. All those in favor, except, oh, sorry, yes, Council, Acting Mayor Johns, yes.
Thank you, Councilor Leahy. I just, I just wanted to clarify that the, the amendment that Councilor Cruthers had brought forward regarding the communication, that that was encompassed within the, the motion, as I fully support what Councilor Cruthers suggested.
Yes, thank you very much for, for remembering that. Do we need to have it put on the screen by the clerks, the adjustment?
You just need to say, as amended.
As amended, yes. So as amended, we can all see on the screen there that a copy of the resolution be sent to the Northern Six municipalities and the Ministry of the Environment, Conservation, and Parks. All those in favor? And that is approved. And I'll just ask Mr. Megget, sitting in the Engineering and Public Works Department, if he has any other further items that he wishes to discuss or share with us.
Thank you. Nothing further at this time.
Thank you very much. And back to you, Acting Mayor Johns.
Thank you, Councilor Leahy. So folks, that takes us down to item K, and then K through O, there's no other items. So with that, I will suggest that we move to item P, which is adjournment. Can I get somebody to move for adjournment? Councilor Leahy, thank you. And all those in favor? Motion carries. And be resolved that the, oh, sorry, I should have read this before. Sorry, folks, learning the logistics. Be resolved that the meeting of committee of the whole council adjourn, 124. All those in favor? There we go. Thanks, folks. We'll see you back here in a few minutes at 2:00.